Martin Doherty, Paul Tilsey and Cornwall Council.
Any declarations of registered or non-registered disbursements of community interest or non-registered interests? None? Okay, so the minutes of full council to receive confirmed sign the minutes of the extraordinary council meeting held on the 80th of August 2022. Can I propose that we receive confirmed sign notes?
And just note there's a slight correction on the numbers which we will put through if you look at them.
I second that.
Thank you, yes. All those in favour then please? And all those against? Any objections? And the minutes of the committees to receive the note minutes of the committee meetings listed below. And it's the planning committee on the 17th of August and the 31st of August. I propose that we receive the note minutes. Thank you, all those in favour? Thank you. What is the next receipt?
Martin notes.
Okay, there's report. I'm going to keep it quite short. I've got a sore throat this evening, so. First of all, a very warm welcome to Lou Quinton, our new councillor for Strope. And I just want to touch on a couple of things, nothing, nothing huge. Just wanted to say a bit of recognition really. Again, I've mentioned it before, but the continued amazing programme of events that is constantly going on over at Castle. You know, the local bands on the Barrow standing all the time, all of that, just so good to see. And their Wednesday summer fun days, I don't know if anyone's managed it down. Amazing, really good free event for people, which is very welcome in the small areas especially. So, and also just a bit of an update really, lots of conversations have been happening with two local organisations, Pride and Royal British Legion. And from next year onwards, Pride have moved their events to the beginning of July, which is amazing. I think an incredible example of a community group working sort of harmoniously and positively. Coming together to enable the R B A to have the Castle Lord's on their Armed Forces Day, which two events flash out to now. So really nice positive way forward on that one. Okay, so moving on is an opportunity for Cornwall Council as president to discuss Cornwall Council issues. And we are joined by Peter this evening.
Thank you. August is normally described as a recess month for Cornwall Council, so there are not generally any formal meetings. However, there's been quite a lot going on, lots of local casework. But there are two things I want to report to you really. On the 24th of August, I had councillor Louis Gardner, who's the Cornwall councillor, cabinet member with a portfolio for the economy to view. I showed him around all of the key issues that I consider are things that he needs to be aware of. But in particular, the canal and harbour and the breakwater, which I believe needs significant investment going forward. So he's not going to be surprised when the ask for probably several million pounds comes across his desk in the next six months or so. I also introduced Louis to the town team. We had a good session with them, so that's really good. Well, one of the things that Louis did say to me was that he has actually got a social fund pot of money available to him. And he was talking about local councils and the conversation came about because I was saying what we're doing with the war room project. And he said that he was looking for local councils to come forward with ideas that might help address the energy costs. So we can get a thinking capsule and put a little project together, that might be something we could get some funding for. And he was talking a couple of hundred thousand quid, so some significant money could come our way if we were to be interested in generating a project of that nature. So anybody who's interested in perhaps talking about that, get round to me tomorrow or next week or something. The other biggest news story for us of course is the drought conditions that we're facing. The canal, it has exposed the damage that we sort of knew was there, but actually when you see it, it's horrifying. If you look to the east side of Falcon Bridge, the bank has completely collapsed. There's lots of other damage again, which we suspected was there, but when you actually see it, it's a lot worse than perhaps you might have imagined or perhaps you might have imagined. I've been almost staying in contact with Don Martin, who's the leader for the outdoor environment. He has got a budget identified for a complete dredging of the canal, which we've been working on for several years now. I'm not ready to make it public because the budget hasn't been agreed, but we're hoping to get just shy of a million quid put together in order to dredge the canal from Hillbridge right through to the Lockgates early next year. But that's not confirmed, so I don't want to, I don't want to be trumpeted now too loudly yet. Right, but we know that we need to find funding to make the repairs to the canal. And many, many local people have said to me, wouldn't it make sense to mobilise, as we call what Mac engineers today? Because the canal is dry and it would be a lot cheaper to get them in there mending the banks while it's dry, rather than have to provide a coffer down and create a dry working area where the canal can still back up. So I am pressing really hard for that. Where's what happens? I don't know. There's no guarantee. There's no identified money in the pot. But I'm hoping that we're going to get something in the next few days to be able to be announced to you. And the other thing which we're probably all aware of is the damage to the breakwater that was done. And some of you might have noticed the engineering team that went out to the end of the breakwater and hopefully stabilised some of the damage done to it. Councillor Tilsey told me he wasn't impressed with the work. And I'm going to be following that up over the next couple of weeks with the outdoor team to see where we're going with that. But I remain to say, my biggest fears for the infrastructure of Bude remain in the longevity of the canal and harbour. Those are the two items which are most susceptible to immediate damage. And I'm going to be pressing, working really hard on those over the next few months.
Brilliant, thank you Peter.
That's a question. It's interesting that the Cornwall councillor, whose name I've already forgotten, Louis, was introduced to the town team. Is there any way that we could potentially, you know, when visits like that come about? If any of the town councillors want to be involved in the discussion, we could facilitate that?
Yes, of course, but I've been waiting really for the economic piece to be picked up, which I know that we had Simon, I think, or the two Simons have talked about it several months ago. But we haven't really got a heads round that yet. So when you have a cabinet member with a specific portfolio, unless you've got a strong representation to make, it's probably better to keep your power dry. But I hear what you're saying.
Come in.
Looking at the canal, I think we're in a situation where we need to do a little bit of triage and decide. And if there's a million quid in the pot, or even close to a million quid, maybe the upper reaches of the canal, I'm talking from Rods Bridge on up, are, I'm not saying abandoned, because I wouldn't like to put that onto, you know, onto an agenda to abandon it. But that could possibly be left to Mother Nature a little bit more than the actual basin and the lower reaches of the canal. So I would urge Cornwall Council to get the appropriate civil engineers in there, have a little bit of a clansman eyeball and see what sort of ballpark figure is needed. Because I think that a million quid is just going to vanish overnight. So to even, even shore it up. And I think if we're left with a situation where Lockgates to Rods Bridge is kind of okay and Rods Bridge upwards isn't, that might be a better solution than sort of hoping for dredging the whole canal at some point in the future.
With your indulgence, the difficulty of this is because the flow of the canal, even though it's a stable body of water, there is a flow in it, even though it's very slow, but the flow is from Hillbridge towards the sea Lockgates. And the, the upper reaches especially are very, very heavily silted. So if you, if you were to dredge the bottom level, all it would do is to create an opportunity for the silt in the upper level to come straight down and fill back up again. So you're far better to do the whole thing.
Kind of, kind of soared up, but until the canal regeneration project of the early 2000s, the lock gates, which currently exist in the upper reaches of the canal, were basically common walls. And so there were minimal flow through. There was a small regulation by a paddle, but the extent to which all the silt from the upper reaches are going to come down and fill up the lower reaches overnight is imminent. I just look at the scale of the project and I'm fearful. I'm fearful that, you know, we're not far away from somebody somewhere saying, gee, canal's beyond economic repair. And that's, that's, you know, that's where we're at. And I would, you know, I'm not throwing kind of stones at Cornwall Council, there's no, there's no need to. Everybody in the town knows the state of the canal when Cornwall Council came into existence. And everybody in the town knows the state of the canal now. And they are vastly different in terms of the channel, well, just the general upkeep really.
Any other questions for Peter? Yes?
I was there watching the blokes do it in Brightwater. There was three of them there. They're going to take many years to do any decent work. They should, you know, they got to put some enough blokes in there that they could go and work for the time, you know, for the long time. I mean, three, four blocks ain't going to do nothing.
I'm not sure I can say anything other than agree with you. Because Paul Tilsey said that he was unhappy with the quality of the work that was done. I haven't been down to have a look yet, but I am going to pick that up. And I have already told and forwarded his thoughts on to the outside manager, Don Martin.
I mean.
So I'm not, I agree with you, it needs more.
But you've been very lucky that this summer we have mucked up any blows or real big surfs, because it just wiped the whole lot out. I mean, nothing against the blokes are there doing, but you need three or four gangs, one here, one there, one over there. Instead of, you've got a swing show there and half the time it's just, mate's just sitting in it.
Yes, Katie. Yeah, so my question was regards to the meeting that we actually had with councillor Desmond. In regards to like, you know, the bigger picture connections of Bude. And basically, one of the things that he said he would try and do is get back to us at the end of August. And obviously it's only just October, but do you have, have you had any updates? We've not really had anything from him, have I not been like replied from the request he made to me as a business? Yeah.
Okay, so when councillor Gardner was here, he told me that he'd spoken to councillor Desmond before his visit. And that councillor Desmond wanted to make sure or have a sense check on the notes and promises that he had made during that meeting before coming back to us.
Okay.
And I've not received anything other than that informal token saying that, that, that they understand they are due to get back to us, but they're just sent to check in what way they're going to say to us.
Okay, thank you everybody.
I wanted to say a comment, if no supply for public comment.
Um, we're almost there. Oh, it depends. Did you want to comment directly to what Peter's talking about?
With regard to the breakwater.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Um, Peter, I took photographs of what I could see of the damage of the breakwater before when the guys started. I took photographs of the work as they were doing it and actually spoke to the chaps. Now, the photographs that I've got, including of how them doing the work, suggest to me that what they've done is nowhere near adequate. Speaking to the chaps, the guy, I don't know his exact position was, but he seemed to be a foreman or somebody somewhat in charge. He said he'd never worked on a sea defence before, didn't exactly inspire me with confidence. And he also said that they had no instruction to do anything about Tommy's pit. Now, Tommy's pit is a terrible condition and it's never got hot water in a condition where it's in. And I'm pretty sure that if we get a few decent winter ties up against it, Tommy's pit will actually be pushed through because there's no water being retained behind it to balance force the wave that's coming up against it. There's lots of areas where water can get under and actually lift that whole thing apart. And then that's the breakwater. And then I've noticed on your social media, the shoring sort of words that you gave after having had this meeting with the financial man of Cornwall Council. There's a bit of not joined up thinking there somewhere. Because there is another, I'll call him an authority, the Cornwall councillor, who is putting it in writing that Cornwall Council don't see how your canal can be maintained. Global War for Getters and More People. So somewhere within Cornwall Council, there was a difference of opinion.
Are you referring to the maritime manager, Chris Jones?
I don't know. It's just something that's been brought to my attention, so. I'm going to look into it a bit further because I think the canal and the breakwater, to my mind, they're not disconnected from each other. And, you know, they're a bit of a personal interest, I suppose. But I would like to show you the photographs at least so that you've got, you know, a record, at least you can see what you're talking about. I know that you mentioned that it hadn't actually been done yet. Have they, do they think they've finished at the moment? Because the swing show line, everything's gone, so.
I, I think they think they've finished.
Well, they better wait not be because screw you all, they haven't.
Okay, thank you very much, Richard, I appreciate that. I, I was just thinking on behalf of the castle actually, like capturing that, you know, the footage of people working on stuff, like history of it, like it's like history, so actually having like those photos, I think adding those to the castle collection in some way would be looking to capture somehow. I don't know how we could do stuff like that.
Can I respond to Richard's? That's okay. Yeah, I would like to look through your photo too. I'm, I'm almost feeling like I'm getting tired of trying to support Cornwall Council because I, as councillors, we're expected to give a positive review of what's going on. But if I'm honest, I'm really ticked off with the way things are progressing in this area. I think what you're saying is, is a, is a valid fear, right? And part, it comes about because effectively the harbour, which is effectively everything to the seaward side of Falcon Bridge, including the, the, the main basin, the sea lock gates, all of the moorings and the breakwater, come under the management and responsibility of the Harbours Board. The Harbours Board hasn't got that much money. It takes, it now takes the income from the car park to put into its coffers. And that was, it, it was thought that that would be sufficient for the ongoing day-to-day maintenance of Bude Harbour. Now, as we know, what happens is actually if things aren't maintained, all of a sudden you get catastrophic damage. And instead of being a ongoing maintenance issue, you need a serious capital input of millions of pounds. And I think that's probably where we are, for honest. The Harbours Board hasn't got that money. And I think what they want to do is they would like to, or they would like to consider, I believe, looking at decommissioned harbour, which would mean that it would become a flood defence asset and therefore the responsibility of the Environment Agency. I personally don't want that to happen because it's wrong. We've had several fights before to keep Bude as an operating harbour. I think it's part of our, it, it's part of what we are in Bude, that we have got a working harbour. Bude wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that harbour, I don't think, in the way that we see it today. So I'm very strong on making sure that everything that we can do to keep it maintained properly will be done. Right, but I don't want to say I'm that confident. I'm going to do everything I can, but it would be wrong to give, you know, glossy videos saying it's all assured that it is going to happen because I don't feel it gets it from the blood.
Yes.
Well, just on a point of information. When the canal and the harbour was administered by the Cornwall district council and we're now considering the work front, there were three staff designated to the canal and harbour 52 weeks a year. One of those members of staff was given overtime to go out every day, including Christmas day, to check the breakwater. There was always eyes on the Bude canal, always, and always eyes on the breakwater and the moorings in the harbour. And although the budgets weren't vast, simply by having those boots on the ground and doing small-scale preventative maintenance, many of the problems wouldn't have blown up as they have. And like I said, just a, just a point of information, I don't want to be the old fart who tells you how things used to be 30, 40 years ago. But 30, 40 years ago, the budgets were not vast, but there were always eyes and hands and boots on the ground maintaining the canal harbour.
Yes.
Possible to speak now? Um, just as a thought, is there any opportunity the Shared Prosperity Fund could be made for some of the work? If not, do I ensure of it? Shall I write that to Peter?
Yes, there's the answer. That, that is what they're looking at. But they're already hoping to access that fund to script a dredging, that's one of the issues.
Okay, thank you really, thank you Peter. Um, so here's just from the.
Um, so, uh, here's just from the councillors, um, and as part of that section that I would like for Liam. Um, and Sophie, Sophie, sorry, Sophie from Cognition. And to have an opportunity to tell us, give us a bit of a report on the food and activities programme that's been going on over the summer days. Um, what happened about your, did you remember? Yeah, fantastic. Okay, I think Liam's got a bit of a power on, on the computer. Oh. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, just to introduce ourselves, I'd start with, my name's Liam Darke, I run and own LJD Coaching. Which we are an educational community sports provider, physical activity, predominantly working with children who. In greater support, be that through community programmes or through education.
Hello, I'm Sophie, I'm a co-cognition learner. Um, and we are a scene-based company based in Beaufort. And, um, we own local schools, uh, to bring scene-based, uh, lessons and we also do holiday programmes. Um, in the area as well.
So just a bit of a background, um. I've actually run Time to Move holiday programmes, Time to Move holiday programme to provide free places for free school children to the same holiday division. During the major holidays, that being summer and Easter, which has now, in twenty twenty-two, is now extending to Christmas, excuse me, to Christmas as well. I've been involved with it since twenty twenty-twelve, um, and a short period where I wasn't involved here, when I changed jobs. Um, but came back into it in Easter and ran a successful programme in Easter. Um, from there, I'd already set up and planned to listen to the cognition learners come join me. Um, to be able to expand our community offer, to be able to access and provide for more children to be able to attend. Because not everybody is interested solely in physical activity and music, they have other interests. However, the Time to Move programme is driven towards physical activity and healthy eating. From there, um, there was then, I heard whispers that there were things that the council were looking to do with food programme. Um, which I felt would be better in the process I was making, to be able to make a whole community programme. Uh, I was already working with, um, groups such as Beaufort Beats. Um, uh, and then obviously Cognition as well came on board, so it made sense to work together. For meetings with the couns-, some councillors, um, it was a group that we could work together. And funding that the council had, um, could be put to good use to support children who are on the bright line, um, with the Beaufort Stranown area. Which is what happened. So, who came and who attended? Um, we had, uh, one thousand one hundred and forty-five bookings that attended our sessions, who were booked to attend our sessions. There were three hundred and forty-eight unique bookings, hundred and sixty-two cancellations. And the important part from your point of view as a council is there were six hundred and ten bookings who used the Beaufort Stranown Town Council voucher at five pound a day. That is for both sessions, because cognition and multi-sports all came under the objective banner because of the physical education element. Time to Move wouldn't support, uh, wouldn't support cognition alone, but as a standard project with physical activity, it caught, it tied in really well. So that's a really, really high number. Free school meal children, three hundred and eighty-two. Standard bookings, which are people that pay the regular price, were a hundred and fifty-three. And that's standard twenty-three activity days. Fifteen were through multi-sports and eight through the standard cognition sessions. As a group for an area, bearing in mind the size of you compared to other places in Beaufort. We are under one of eight areas that provided for over five hundred children. And only one of two areas that provided for a thousand children or more. And actually we top out with the most children booked on to any session across Cornwall. So, we did have unfortunately no-shows, which is an occurrence and also from experience is a regular occurrence, particularly when things are offered for free. That is, that is just how it is unfortunately. In addition to that, people's lives are very busy and sometimes when you book on the twenty-seventh of June. When it comes to the twenty-fifth of July, that's a very long period of time to try and remember that you've booked something a few months ago. Um, and though they do get emails to remind, people's lives are busy. From free school meals, we have fifty-eight people, fifty-eight children who were no-shows across both the multi-sports and cognition. Um, and thirty from the Beaufort Stranown Town Council vouchers and three from the standard bookings. As I said, it's just an unfortunate event, unfortunately we can't go and provide it, people are reminded, they get emails. Um, we did have, however, as you'll look at the data, for example, this one here, which was the seventeenth of August and it was a multi-sport session. You'll see a really high number, that nine no-shows for free school meals and thirteen for the Beaufort Stranown Town Council. So I took it upon myself to try and find out why all these children on this one particular day did not attend. We had a massive outbreak of chicken pox and that was the reason for the no-shows. In turn, that then resulted, as I looked through the data, the same children that were no-shows on that day were actually cancellations the following day and the following day after that. Because obviously they had chicken pox. There was only three people that I weren't, I wasn't able to get out of, out of those nine and thirteen. So the majority all had chicken pox. It's just one of those things. Um, but that was a huge anomaly in the others, because the rest of the cases, we had threes, ones, fours, and the other, the only other high was a six. Um, so yeah, that's why I investigated that area. Um, across the groups, uh, for multi-sports across fifteen days, there were eight hundred and twenty-seven children attend, which is an average attendance of fifty-five point one children a day. Uh, bearing in mind we had sixty places available each day, um, that's well over three quarters. Cognition equally, they provided eight days, two hundred and eighteen children attended, um, that's an average of twenty-seven point two five. Um, that doesn't include the no-show children, that is people that physically walk through the door and sit in those sessions. Um. Just as an overall, you'll see this huge number of two thousand five hundred and five. And when I looked at it, I was like, oh my days, what does that mean? Um, what that means is that is children or parents that have access, there's everything we run through, so this is called playways. That is every person that's either booked, cancelled, um, so there could be a duplicate on there. Um, showing an interest, cause you can mention an interest or put a like, meaning that they want to be reminded of it again. Okay, so that's a huge number. Um, as you can see, the majority of children that looked to attend our session were aged five years old. But the majority, as I talked about previously, of that means with some councillors on Mondays and previous to the sessions or starting in August. I said our highest numbers would be aged between the five and eight years old age group, which is the case. However, we did have a high number of ten-year-olds, which was nine point three percent. Um, ethnicity, as you can see, which again was expected, we had ninety-seven point one percent, um, were white British. Um, however, in actual, factual figures, um, there were eighteen, um, children from an Asian background. Um, there were nineteen who did not identify. And we had, um, thirteen who came from other backgrounds. Um, in addition to that, uh, sixty-one point eight percent of children were from non-free school meal background. With thirty-eight point two percent being from free school meal background, which is a significant increase. Um, on the Easter programme that we ran, um, and also in comparison to the rest of Cornwall, is very high. I haven't got that data figure, but I've just been told this morning that that is very high. Um. Again, disability-wise, we have a range of disabilities that came to us from hearing, mental health, learning difficulties. Uh, to physical disabilities as well. Um, and then there was ninety-three point nine percent who didn't have any disabilities. Gender-wise, we were split forty-eight point eight percent to fifty-one point one percent between male and female. Um, which again is, is pretty good, they're fairly equal split. What did they say? So across, because I managed in terms of the bookings, the feedback here, though it says to Liam. It was, it also reflects on cognition as well, so it's not all to me. So we had lots and lots of positive feedback, which is really good. Um, these are some of our social media posts, this was a joint post that we had, um, and then other things that have been sent to me. Um, there is one in there, which I can't see right at the moment, but, oh, here it is. From my point of view, value for money, fun activities for people we can trust, take care of our children. Thank you all, thank you for everything you've done. And that was personally attended with children both through cognition and to the multi-sports activity events. Um, there was another post which highlighted how that, here we are. Uh, thank you for everything this summer. I've sent the kids to cognition and multi-sport session, without the five-pound session cost for my friends' kids. And the free school meal places for my children, they wouldn't have been able to attend anything. So thank you for, thank you so much to everyone, the kids loved it. So the value of what we could offer has enabled a number of children to attend who wouldn't have attended normally. Or certainly wouldn't have attended the in-may sessions, and particularly in the current financial climate. When it comes to childcare, childcare compared to wages and cost of living is really high. So we were able to offer something that was A, a safe place, B, an enjoyable environment, an environment where they were fed. Um, and where families and parents trusted us. Um, what went well? Well, that's a good one.
Uh, so we kind of split it into our headings for kind of both of us. Um, for ourselves, sign up, uh, we're quite used to having quite a lot of people signing up. So this was the first time that we extended to having thirty children at a time. Um, we were, we were limited by space because we were in here and. Um, so thirty children was kind of the maximum we could have for a safe environment. But sign up was really easy, it was, um, the Playways website was easy to navigate. Um, and our courses all sold out pretty quickly. It was, we didn't have to do very much promotion to be honest, did we? And so I think we went quite smoothly that, that way.
From, from the signup point of view with the multi-sports, um, again, really smooth. Um, Tuesdays were quieter days initially. Um, because there were other events happening within you on those days, for example, with our Beaufort Football Club. Um, however, usually within twenty-four to forty-eight hours before, we filled up on those days. Um, we only had one day when we didn't fill our bookings, um, prior to some sessions.
Yeah, um, the running of the days, they were, um, quite smooth. Um, for ourselves, we, it was a new way of working, we'd never offered lunch before. Um, and our maximum time was usually two-hour sessions, two and a half hours, I think, is our maximum. So offering a four-hour session was, um, different for us, so negotiating, um, kind of how we would run the sessions. Um, and obviously factoring in snack times and lunch times for the children and making sure that they were able to have a, a good amount of time. To eat and socialise as well, because that's also quite important. Um, so the children come with friends who are different age groups, but due to the number of children, we kind of split them into ages. So kind of reception of year one, year two and year three and year four plus. Um, so we've got, and I have been year two, we did friends in year four, so given them those times to kind of socialise as well. Um, so yeah, the day went quite smoothly, we were in here, we operated out two rooms. Um, and you, you know, we love being here because it's always really clean, it's very safe. Um, got access to the toilets, all of those kinds of things, and the kitchen. I'm sure she knows we do make quite a mess sometimes, during, it's been not quite long. Um, but it's, um, you know, it was, it was a lovely place to be, um, and the children were great. They, um, they, you know, they were able to negotiate around the rooms and everything else really well, so that was all good. Um.
From the multi-sport point of view, uh, we ran on a three or a four station day. Um, based on the children, how many activities we were providing. We provided a range of activities, Kate Roy from Beaufort Beats Dance, Kate provided dance for us. Um, we had Kate Ball, Kate Tidball from, uh, Kate Tidball Tuning. Um, she provided samba band for us, Amanda Wright, who provided, uh, flute and recorders. Um, myself provided a range of physical activities from footballs, tennis to cricket, dodgeball. Uh, we did seated volleyball, we did bolcha, we did volume, normal volleyball. Um, and we also did, um, our own version of cricket that we played with a mixture of different instruments, shall we say? Um, which it gives a really good with the children. Um, and again, we built in our snack times, um, and also we built in also lunchtime. Time and then after lunch, uh, we have a fun multi-sport session, multi-skilled session. Where every child that attends comes down to, um, the cage, as I call it, a tramp primary skill. And everyone mixes together, so you're five or eleven, everyone mixes together and they all play as one big group of sixty children.
Um, food, food was amazing, um, we got fruit from Sainsbury's for kind of morning snack. Um, we did find, we have quite a few children who did bring in their own snack, but the fruit always kind of went as well. Um, particularly some children who might not have had breakfast, got us there. Uh, going to, you know, we had some children eat three or four pieces of fruit because they were really hungry, so, you know, being able to offer that was great. Um, and then the lunches were brilliant, they were appropriate for the age of the children, shall we say? Because, you know, those people have children might know that they can be quite fussy about food. Um, just because when it's healthy, isn't necessarily, you know, you want to eat it. Um, but Sarah at Butterbomb was brilliant, there was a lovely range of food, um, sandwiches available. Um, loads lovely fruit platter that went down really well at the day. Um, so all the children ate really, really well. Um, we probably had a couple of children that bought their own lunch boxes, but not very many. Um, and all the food went, I didn't know until one day when we had a few sandwiches left, but that was it, so that's good.
Very much the same from my point of view, um, the partnership with Butterbomb, which I started in Easter with Sarah, and continued during the summer was fantastic. Um, because hand on heart, could not cater for every allergy that we had come on, though we had fifteen children with fifteen different allergies. Um, had to be catered for, um, some of our food had to be made completely separate away from everything else. Um, and Sarah caters for everything, it's all bags separately, um, so those children have their own fruit, food. And also that inspires confidence as well within families and parents, so they can send their children to something and know that they're safe. Um, because we had seven different children come, but that depends due to food allergies, um, which we were all trained to deliver. Um, but we didn't want to use it, obviously. Um, so that is the, the beauty as well, and also to support the local business, the small business in the town. Um, so massive thanks to Sarah, um, and also a massive thanks to Justin, that, um, Sainsbury's in Beaufort, never an issue. Fruit was provided, provided fruit was suitable again for the age of the children. Um, I think it was the same to what Sophie said, you know, we had children come in that A and F in the morning. Um, we had children that expressed to us, they'd be as much like at lunchtime, why not eat? So the importance of us providing that food, um, was massive. Um, and it's a fact that it wasn't always free to introduce it from them in that situation. So, again, children use the voucher, it was valuable for them, very much so. Um. Uh, communication, so. Yeah. Communication, um, unfortunately, as with any computer system, there is occasionally glitches. When you're having glitches with thirty, forty, fifty people at the same time, and you're on a weekend and it's manic.
On ten o'clock at night.
Or ten o'clock at night, as I pass. Um, and they're messaging you, um, and you're, most of the time I can sort things myself and navigate around because you're given so much access. There's lots of things that are restricted. To be fair, the playways, they were great, I could email on a Sunday, Monday morning, nine o'clock, between nine and ten o'clock, they were terrific. Um, we had one major glitch, um, at the beginning, um, I think it was on the eighth of July. Um, which I had to verify fairly quickly, but we managed to sort it between myself, Playways and Active Cornwall. Again, Active Cornwall, really easy to speak to, get hold of, work with, and if you couldn't get hold of them at that moment, drop them an email, they'll ring you back. Um, because if you couldn't get through the playways, generally they can sort, sort minor issues equally as well. Um. Relationship with myself, cognition learning, they were reliant on me, um, and I trust me, we've got bookings and making sure that I open everything up. Um, and I felt from my point of view, so it must have been different in a minute. From my point of view, um, communication worked really well in both directions. Um, there's things that didn't go right, they don't go well, as everything is, um, and there's lots of things we can take from a learning point of view to go forward into our Christmas programme. Uh, but yeah, from my point of view, that communication went well, and the same with, with Sarah at Butterbomb. Because there was occasionally, you had bookings the night before and, oh, my days, we've got a nut allergy, someone's got a raspberry allergy, someone that's allergic to eggs. Quips out tomorrow morning, I know it's ten o'clock now, but tomorrow morning I eat. Um, and it wasn't an issue, she always sorted it, and the same with Justin with regards to the fruit. Um, as numbers, if numbers changed, email it, don't make any odds, everything was ready for them this morning.
Yeah, communication's great, I mean, we, we were a bit nervous, to be honest, because we've spent a lot of time on our booking system and it's. And it's exactly how we want it to be, and we can see in advance who's there, so handing everything over to Liam was very nerve-wracking. But, um, it was absolutely fine, um, you know, communication was great, we managed to get. Um, because obviously our activities are a bit different and we like to see things in advance so that we can tailor our activities to the ages of the children that we've got. Um, and just making sure that everyone's challenged enough and, you know, it's fun for, you know, if you've got no luck and you're odd. Uh, you don't want them doing the same thing as a five-year-old, so just making sure that, um, everyone's ready for them. So our communication with Liam was fantastic, um, and there wasn't really any issues at all, was there?
Quite a bit.
Um, and also, like Liam said, with Butterburn, um, we had one day where somebody filled in their dairy, two children actually. And filled in their dairy allergy in the wrong column, and lunch was delivered, so I knew that they had dairy allergy. But it obviously hadn't communicated through because they put it in the wrong column. Um, so we phoned Sarah really quickly and was like, I'm so sorry, we've got two children with dairy allergy, lunch is here. Um, and she was like, don't worry, I'll sort it out. Um, and in time that the child had managed to eat their banana, they had their sandwich set in, you know, which was great. So really, really, a great, amazing job done there, so yeah.
Um, with regards to premises, we've already touched on that, also I used, um, strat primary school, they were really accommodating. We used one end of the school to use a small hall, the corridor and the, uh, we did plan to use the field, um, as well as the playground. Uh, but due to various needs within the groups that we had, uh, the field wasn't possible to use, we used just the playground. The hallway and the small hall, which worked really well. Um, they were very trustworthy, they threw me the key and fob to access their loans and said off you go for two, four weeks. And that's what it is.
Yeah, and we're here, we look at here, that's also accommodating, I feel that we've got quite a good relationship with the staff and work here. And, um, so we had two rooms, um, over the morning and the afternoon session, um, and we rotated the children, I would say.
Um, what could improve, um, so attendance, I think I speak for both of us really. One of the most frustrating things is no-shows, when you have no-shows, because you've planned, food's ordered, everything's coming. Um, it is frustrating, um, if there's a way around it, we're looking for it. Um, and we will try and find it, um. So that is a frustration, and also cancellation on the morning sessions. Um, I was led to believe that awards are cut off on terms of cancellations, uh, but there isn't, it's a four, if you're able to cancel. Um, well, until the last minute, even five minutes before, um, so there isn't a cancellation clause in it. Um, that however, I've got a meeting in Fulmer on the ninth of September, which I'll be attending. And these are areas following discussions with Sophie O'Brien, which I will be, will be raising and looking at ways in which we can rectify to try and. Overcome these, these errors. In addition to the no-shows, um, this year, and I've never known a year like it. In that we had an unexpected amount of one-to-ones required for children. Um, this year we teamed up with, um, a show of our Cornwall carers, um, who also supported us to be able to make some where if one-to-ones needed. But unfortunately, there are some missing goods through the net at times, and then there are children that we pick up through our own knowledge for our school-based work that we already do. And there were children that attended, one child that attended the day and wasn't where, because parents, we can only take what parents got on for. Um, attended the day and we were like, does, do you have a one-to-one in school? Yeah, every day. Right, bro. So then, because he was booked on every day, we made sure then that was put in place. But in terms of a no-show, if you've assigned a one-to-one.
Yeah.
Who is in addition to cost, your expected predicted cost beforehand, and then they don't show up. Then effectively that is wasted money down the road from our point of view.
Not for everyone's point of view, isn't it?
That's the way, how our point of view, and everyone's point of view.
But you can use quite a few times with taking your children.
Yeah, there were some children that did, but unfortunately, when children have signed up, even though they haven't, so say, for example, I had one child that was booked on for thirteen days. She didn't attend any, but I couldn't cancel her off, I spoke to parent guardian and said, don't keep me booked on tomorrow. Oh yeah, we forgot to say I've been there tomorrow, didn't show up. There's nothing I can do, I can't take them off of it still, um, because they, they've booked on, that's how it is. Um, so just a few photos, um, if you want to see more photos, please feel free to look on the cognition learning social media pages. And the L G D Kitchen social media pages. Um, I haven't got those publishes, photos and videos etcetera on here, um, so apologies for that. Um, I did put together a little video and hopefully it works because I'm, he's saying, those of you who have crashed, so much we can learn this. Where's the crasher too? Where's your crasher, can I see? Oh, it's not active. Let's go on, it's dead.
You might go choose the, you know, if you're down.
There you go, done it on my app.
That was awesome, bro, thanks. That was never signed, do you remember that? Kai, have you enjoyed the holiday programme?
Yeah!
Um, what have you liked about the holiday programme?
First, I liked, um, I really liked the tennis.
Do you like the food? What's your favourite piece of the food we passed? Tuna, ham, what else, you like the jam, do you? So that was just a little clip of our, um, our programme snapshot of it really. Um, now as you can see, for a couple of things, we've tried to get children who've attended more frequently, just saving bits. But one of the ones that particularly stood out was Grace when she said, what did you enjoy about this most? And she said, I've met new people, made me friends, and made life with my friends. And that's massively important really, and more we're aiming to, to achieve as a group. In conclusion, I put, um, put this young man up, uh, he attended every single day. Um, and there's lots of things that you can quantify, figures and numbers are brilliant. But with children, there's lots of things you can't quantify. Um, this young man, eh, pretty much everything in my inside, doesn't it? But his improvement from day one to day fifteen, socially particularly, was huge, absolutely massive. Um, we had another young boy that attended our sessions, who hasn't attended school in three years. Um, not just because of Covid, because he can't go to school. Um, he goes to another group where he has to have two to one, two adults or one child to look after him. Could he come to multi-sports? So I had few meetings with his, um, social worker, um, with his foster parents, uh, with the school he's meant to go to. Um, we had lots of things in place for him, uh, ready for him to come on day one, to see how day one goes for him. He was with us ten minutes, I told his foster mum to go away because he was fine. The biggest thing for me was when he walked out on that first day, and his warning was, I wanna make a friend. He walked, he walked out at the end, and he looked up and he just went, mum, I've made a friend, I've made a friend! And like that made his day, but he came back, um, four times to us. And by the fourth day, he had a normal one, that's all. So, yeah, things like that, you cannot quantify, that's all. So, hopefully.
I don't think, yeah. Um, yeah, I think for us, we see a certain number of children, we have, um, our own kind of, well, we. We sponsor children, so, uh, if you're on free school meals, then you get a certain amount of vouchers so you can attend our classes. But we've not done anything like this before. And some children have never done any of this kind of steam-based stuff, not really thought they were into it. You know, particularly girls, um, who were always trying to kind of get involved in the steam-based learning. And, um, you know, some of them have just been like, I need to come back, there's one girl who was really, really worried about it, she just didn't really want to stay. She was like, mate, her mum had to stay with her, you know, she was nine, so she was quite old, um, didn't want to stay. She was like, I'm gonna try it, but I need my mum with me. Um, after about fifteen minutes, mum went, and, um, and then by the end, she was like, I need to come back, I need to come back, I want to come back tomorrow, I want to come back. And she came back to us quite a few times, so, you know, just getting those children who don't always. Don't always feel that they can do something to get them on board and say, oh, you know, this is fun, this is good, and get them engaged and inspired by something different, has been brilliant. And I've meted so many new families and new children, it's so, it's been brilliant.
Yeah, having three hundred and forty-eight different children attend, it's a really large number. Um, and seeing some children develop, who came to us every single day for fifteen days. Seeing them develop as people, where they may have started with a one-to-one, or we had one boy, it wasn't, wherever he was a one-to-one. He came and put, let's send him home, at those times he couldn't cope with the day. His mum was obviously really, really sorry, I said, there's anyone, yeah, there's one to one in school, so that's right, so I know he can't come back, he has a note, bring him tomorrow. So he came out the next day, by the last week, he was a different boy to you now, completely changed. Um, but it's that consistency, A, of our staff, who are, you know, our staff are fantastic. But also, it's that safe environment they can come to, um, which is really, really important. And everything combined, the feeding, the physical activity, the STEM activities. That care, that safe environment is why children come back. So when I see three hundred and forty-eight fresh faces out of one thousand one hundred and forty-five, I take those confidence in that, actually. The other seven hundred plus have come back to you again.
Yeah.
And again, and again, because you're offering something they want, what they need, um, which is massively important, very important. Now, our next plan, it's look to Christmas, when we know that financially it's going to be harder hit. Um, so we're going with the maximum days, you're allowed one, uh, Christmas period, which is four days. Uh, which will be in the first four days of the, the Christmas holidays, even up to the twenty-third of December, is our plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Liam. So fair and clear how hard you've all worked, all of you, so a huge thanks to you and everyone in this work team outside you to make it happen. The, the thought that we've managed to facilitate any part of it is amazing for us, what an amazing opportunity. So thank you for all your hard work on it, it's incredible, so good, like life-changing for some of these childrens. So, yeah, thank you, thank you so much. Has anyone got any questions? Yes, Katie?
Yeah, uh, sorry, I just obviously want to put up, um, like really this is what Beaubee's about, right? It's not really the building's around, like, it's like the community groups and people in fashion and love. And, uh, you've really like elegantly shown that today, I guess, obviously with a whole massive month of work to put behind it, so, uh, yeah, really incredible stuff. Um, so I've got like a few different questions to start, just one. Uh, if, so you, you mentioned about, uh, the space, actually, cognition, so this is all about. My theory is about trying to look at this Good Growth Fund that's come up, and about spaces around the town where things happen. Um, so, you know, you mentioned about the fact you have a limit of thirty, um, if you had, just literally like. Uh, and don't think of any of the existing buildings or any infrastructure or whatever, like if there was larger spaces available. Like, would that be an interest to be able to increase your numbers, do you feel, so it's a space that's limiting your numbers, it's, so you would want to increase that score? And related to that, obviously, the, the most obvious observation is the fact that we've got the multi-sports in one area of the town. Um, it's great that is actually, you know, technique strength, I guess, that's great, but then we obviously had cognition in a different area of town. So, in an ideal world, would you want those in the same sort of environment, so people could?
So, so we tried to get the same side, spoke to all the schools in the area. Um, Stratt School, the only one that came back to us.
Hmm.
There is no way forward potentially that we can both be on the same side as Stratt at Christmas.
Yeah.
Um, because Stratt had work going on this summer with the Grace Centre, or Shaun and my, I think that's all this. Worked there, every single classroom was being gutted and redone, so we basically used the same places that they weren't gutting. Um, but going forward, that is a possibility because they have a large hall as well. But again, the same things still entails, Stratt has a limit in terms of numbers. We're, we took, we, on the last four days, I decided to have a batch and just went, oh, let's give seventy, not sure if it was sixty. Um, so we went with seventy, we filled up spaces, um, but I couldn't have took any more.
Hmm.
And then if it was wet and cognition were there.
Yeah.
Then we would have been killed because the big hall and the small hall would have taken all we used to be for. But looking at Christmas, when predominantly everything can be indoors, there is a space in town, which would be great for everyone to use. Um, but being able to get access to that site is, um, seems to be very hard and expensive. Um, whereas Stratt School, um, in comparison, I paid, paid fifty pound a day. For everything I used, that was small hall, corridor, I'd use the kitchen area, I'd use the washing machine, I'd use the dishwasher. Their field, if I wanted it, um, and I had used, obviously, the playground area as well, the cage playing area. And because it'd be in school, it's a secure, safe space. At Easter, I used Beaubee Football Club, they were absolutely fantastic, I cannot highly recommend Beaubee Football Club enough for what they did. They gave me the site at Easter for free and said, use what you like, they gave me the key, they gave me the codes to the changing room, so use whatever you want. So they were great. So they were great. The only reason I didn't use them in the summer was because they have all the campers around the outside. So from my point of view, in terms of securing the site for certain children that we have to cater for and support their needs, it wasn't suitable where this school is already equipped and ready for that with fob locks, doors, so on and so forth, allows us to be able to. So that's why we went to Stratton. Um, otherwise, obviously Bead Football Club, because they were super as a community group to be able to allow us to use it and Steph and, and, um, I can't remember his name now. Um, Summer Lewis, Bradley, Popgood, Steph Brad Popgood, you know, were fantastic and, and can't thank them enough for Easter. Um, but Martin Buddle, Penny, and Stratton School were brilliant for us this summer. And yeah, there is a possibility we could all go there, but we just have to work out the logistics here in terms of whether we can use that routine, which I mean, sit down at Stratton and sort of work.
I guess like on that perspective, in terms of the Good Growth Fund, if we could really encourage you guys to talk to Stratton and, because there's nothing stopping, basically Stratton School applying for the Good Growth Fund for, to be able to do, be able to support community events like this. Like there's obviously a pressing need in the town, um, with beneficial future growth, obviously. Like, you know, with our kids, we're growing up, being fed, it'd be a great start. Um, so I, yeah, I would strongly suggest you, you go and straight away, like put an expression of interest.
Stratton obviously are in the process of trying to build a facility that can be used by the community. That's what they're in the process of doing.
Yeah.
Um, so they're putting, I don't know if they've put their planning in yet, or whether they're in the process of doing it, they're trying to raise the funds for their pavilion area. If that got up and running, not, I probably shouldn't say it, but if it did, from a selfish point of view, the running holiday provision, it would be unbelievable. Because we can have a secure site in the field area as well, because that, they then secure it for us. Because there'd be fence around, there'd be pavilion fence around. They can say to the community, "Unfortunately, for these four days, it's unavailable during these times." Um, and then we would have field, the hall space, they'd have that indoor space there as well, which cognition would be used. And then we could use all that area together. So they are, they are trying to do a community, community area treatment.
I was gonna say throughout, our biggest expense after staff is premises. And that puts the cost up for parents and courses and things. It's always been that way for us. Um, and we, because we are a steam based group, we do a lot of science, which is a lot of resources, which is a lot of things to cap. So wherever we go, we need to, like, that's why it's great here because we have a cupboard here, we can put all of our stuff in. Um, so yeah, we need to be able to go and leave our stuff, I suppose. I love, there's lots of logistics around.
Yeah, there's lots of things that I, and Stratton School allowed me to leave all holidays. I just gave you the area. I left all my equipment there every day and then my van picked it all up at the end of the holidays. Um, I need to be, if cognition to join us on, and then know that areas leave their stuff during the holidays, but not leave it full time.
Katie, did you have your...
Um, yeah, I'm gonna be Mr. Hard Nosed Bad Boy.
Go for it.
But you were saying that there's normative, um, quantitative things that you can't measure.
Yes.
But there must be also metrics that you work to. And you were saying earlier on, "We're the best in Cornwall for this, we're the best in Cornwall for that." Now, I'm grass green with this stuff. I, I, I wouldn't know how to begin to compare one set of activities against another. But would you say that this activity which you took, took place during the summer in comparison to previous ones that you've done or other places that are doing the same thing, that, that, that this was quantifiably a, a successful event? That there was some sort of metrics we can put to it, so yes, success?
First, first of all, it's yes, because our attendance rates, our attendance rates, predominantly based on previous experience, the last two weeks of the holiday programme, numbers, no, no, it's always fairly significantly, are really low numbers. Our numbers never know, across any of our activities. They maintained, or as in my case, with multi sport, because I increased the numbers, the numbers actually increased. Um, so that's one thing. We can say we're the best in Cornwall. We said, we were in, we were in, we were in the top eight in terms of, of, we were one of eight that were able to offer for over, and did provide for over five hundred children. And only one of two that were wider over a thousand. And so, you know, so we were the best. So that's, that's where we're at. That's based on the figures actual we're having across. That is at their first glance, I believe, what it means at eleven o'clock in Fomont on the ninth, because we are in that, one of those eight.
So there is, there is some quantitative figures there that we can...
As I showed at the start, we're considered dating in terms of the numbers and figures. That's where, that's where we base our success in terms of the thirdies.
We are getting, you're not going to say no to this question, but genuinely we are getting bang for our bucks for this.
I would, I would say, I, I would, I would elaborate further on that. I would say, yes, you are in terms of the number of children that attended. So I would, I would say, based on experience, the last two weeks, the numbers stayed and maintained at high levels due to people being able to access, um, the five pound voucher. Based on the six hundred and ten children attended, well, not different children, but six hundred bookings used the Bead in Stratton Town Council voucher compared to a hundred and fifty-eight standard bookings. And three hundred and forty-eight that were, um, free school meals. So I would say the Bead in Stratton Town Council voucher allowed more families to access more opportunities than what they would have done if it wasn't there. And...
I can answer that as a mum.
Go for it.
Of three children, I could afford to send my children to Holiday Club so I could work. So I used to drive them with me or get Brian involved and whatever. Because of the few times, um, Stratton voucher, I'd send my children to Liam while I were there, which was very random, but they loved it. But I, I, there's no way I could have afforded to do that otherwise. So, you know, just from a personal point of view, um, you know, it was, it was great.
And the families as well, that, we have ten that were homes to children as well, who couldn't get the voucher directly, but then were able to reclaim their voucher. They were able to claim. And a lot of those families are on the breadline. Um, in addition, we have, I know from the chip families that came, we had a number of families that are based in agriculture particularly, um, who came, who again, at the moment, are really, really struggling. So the voucher benefited from these white people. Yes, there were people, and that's just how it is, because Bead in Stratton have a large demographic in terms of affluent and non-affluent families. There were families that did benefit, but probably didn't need to benefit. But if you take the ones that did against the ones that really, really needed it, the ones who really, really were a lot higher than the ones that didn't, because the ones that don't really generally have childcare in place for the holidays.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I just have a quick question. Um, you said that your premises expenses were the largest expenses for cognition. Can I ask what those were, like daily? Because we heard that Liam's a fifty quid a day at Stratford.
Uh, I'll, of course, I'm, for the four weeks, the two days and four weeks is eight hundred pounds.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Peter?
Uh, on the slide which said what went well, the second from the bottom, and you did reference this in, in, in your piece, was that a lot of the kids turned up without having had breakfast.
Yeah.
And that, the thought of that horrifies me, to be honest. I need my breakfast. And I think kids need it more than I do, to be quite honest. Um, I, I don't want you really to answer this now, but I think it'd be really interesting to give that some thought and see if there's any way that we could begin to address some of those issues.
So in terms of what, so you said in terms of the actual holiday programme, because of the free we had on offer from Sainsbury's, we were able to offer, give them, give them food straight away. I was also fortunate enough to, in the last two weeks, um, someone from Chalsh dropped their kids off and one of them overheard a child saying something, um, and he gave me a box of cornbread. Um, um, so we had that offer as well for some of them, which is small, but not a lot.
And I, I just would be really interested, and it's not something for now, perhaps something you'd give some thought to.
I haven't got them. We haven't got them. I can't give you that number.
At another time, this is, is, I'd be really interested to find if there's any way that we could offer a breakfast club for the kids that are hard to reach, that perhaps would be in this sort of situation. But that's not for now. Maybe we could think about it.
I, so this is something, actually, we are looking at. So in terms of working with schools, there are a number of schools that do offer breakfast clubs. Um, schools that I work with, um, that offer breakfast clubs use what is known as their sports premium money to be able to offer the breakfast club, because they offer physical activity with it. They offer physical activity, but they get toast. Some schools don't, some schools do it on a page basis. And then children are pupil premium, they refuse their pupil premium money to be able to access that. However, one of the hardest things to reach, the children that really need it, are very often the ones that are late to school. Now, I know, because I'm working at three schools in this area already on a full-time basis, that there are amazing staff in those schools that go out of their way, very often out of their own pocket, and they'll buy breakfast things for those children that they know are coming in late to school who need food, and they will feed them. Um, which isn't out of their own pocket, but they do because they're amazing staff. Um, and that's at all three schools that I've worked at in this area. And that's not just those schools. I know wider schools that I also work with, work with now, do exactly the same. Um, but that's only thirty-six weeks of the year, a Monday from it. You've got Saturdays and Sundays and you've got holidays. And one of the things that I'm definitely investigating now into is to fund potentially, is to look at funding as well as the lunchtime situation, is funding the, a food on arrival, um, option. Um, but I haven't finished my...
But I don't know if you did it, the bagel in this, I don't know if you supply thinking. So I know a few schools that I've worked in, they get bagel deliveries for, and everybody gets a bit of bagel. So it's not singled and apt, it's sort of, I don't know who funds that or why that comes.
So another food bank will give things that are literally passed their cell by day, but are still usable. They will give things like bread and things to schools because they can, everyone will take it, so they give to schools.
Yes, Katie.
Um, so, uh, I think another thing that I'd like to try and point out here is, obviously this helps all the kids, but we sort of touched on it slightly, actually, there is an economic benefit for the town in terms of the adults, they still work. Like parents still able to go and contribute, especially during the summer months where we've got visitors, like able to pick up a part-time job in the visitor economy here. So it all fits into each other and that results in potentially more tax and be able to reinvest back into the community again. So I think that's really excellent. Um, I think the thing that also hi, that was highlighted during the report was, obviously there was a lot of, I guess, day-to-day maintenance in terms of seeing who's going, communicating this person, seeing who goes to that person and stuff. And I know that would be inherently very distracting when you're also trying to figure out what sort of project, you know, what you're gonna be doing for the day, things like that. It's like you guys signed up to do things with the kids and not necessarily have to do all the admin stuff. Um, so do you foresee there a way that, uh, we, either we as a town council or like potentially some other fund could help to be able to basically give you some sort of extra support in terms of the more management side, like backend side in some way?
Um...
That's quite hard, isn't it?
It's, you say we're not ready for that, but it happens. It's part of what they say. Um, like it doesn't, you know, delivering in schools, you might deliver in schools, but your admin and community events, it's, it's just...
And some of it, I think it's quite ad hoc, you know, like there and there. So we had somebody who was literally waiting, just in case somebody didn't turn up to the gate, then make their spots and then, you know, you just did all the admin bit then and then.
And he's certainly messaged me, Brian, he said that this person's turned up. I went, "That's a problem. When I do the registers, I just flip them into the register area there because it's a free school meal, it's a free school meal, it's really easy. There's no cost, so they just flip them straight into the register because they're in the members group. You just write them across as attendance, so...
So what you're saying is that you've got, you're basically, you're having to manage that process already and actually having that extra person to basically, you report to them and they do something, isn't necessarily...
No, it sounds like it'd be, that, we've got two, three people in South Wales in Sophie, but then you're adding a fourth person into the equation and then, then... I was ever said it, but I'd love to have a hand alone, I mean. But, and that's why I feel for Sophie and I'm making sure that I'm trying to get everything across to them because I know how I feel. So, um, if you stick another person's equation. But if we get to a point where we've got huge numbers, which I hope to have in the future, then yes, that is something we will hundred percent have to consider because it would not be manageable to do. So having an administrator is what I'd call it.
And then we can just go, go and talk to them.
Because then when they message on the social media page, for example, they're around at half past nine at night. Because the system keeps happening, it, it's loading and I'll say, "We'll fly back with..." "Can we wait till tomorrow?" Because they're always going to answer me at this moment, so, or I can look in the hundreds here with them and that.
Just very quickly, have you spoken to Lidl's recently?
Yes, I have. I spoke to Aunt Laura Lidl's, she's one of the managers.
I was the chairman of the Bead after school club and holiday club. And we used to get tons of stuff donated to us from there.
Do you know what Lidl's donated us?
Why?
I wrote a letter, I wrote a letter to Morrison's Lidl's, Sainsbury's, um, all three of them. Um, and they came back, Sainsbury's came straight back. Morrison's were in the process of changing their community champion. And as soon as the community champion came in place, she emailed me straight away and just went, "Whatever you want." Emailed Lidl's and then a friend of mine, I had all the works out, went to him and he was like, "It's above us, it's decided above us." And they all said, "No."
We used to get, literally, we used to get boxes of stuff to wait for them.
Now they wouldn't, wouldn't do that. So Sainsbury's were great. And if you fed Morrison, at the point when Chanelle came in the place, it was just like, well, actually, we're sorted. And it wasn't, there was no point in taking something we didn't need. Um, she offered everything under the sun, I was like, "I'd love to say, yeah, oh, you've got chocolate, I'll just have chocolate." "And I've got enough fruit already." Um, but I said, "When we come to Christmas, don't worry, I'm not gonna do that." And she was like, "A hundred percent this time." So, yeah, Morrison's Sainsbury's fantastic, Lidl's unfortunately. Um, I didn't reply. And then when I spoke to the member of staff, um, he was like, "Yeah, that's just one of those things. Unfortunately, we have this all the time." He said, "I know, you know, everybody like you, tomorrow, but it's out of my hands."
That's right. Right, well, a big thank you again from all of us. Um, we'll let you go now.
For the material?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, is there any other key to the unionists?
Um, just really wanted to mention, Cal was put, um, a survey on for the Stratton MIU and some community things. Please, 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 authorship, there is copies available in the office if needed. The questionnaire is four questions, I think. It's really simple, but it's really important that we collect as much information as possible to give to the NHS. So I can hand, hand it over to the NHS, um, with what, what Beadham said. And there has been a huge response from the public so far, but please, 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 come and push it. If anyone wants to do that, please. Thank you.
Okay, if no one has anything else, I'm gonna go over to public participation. If anybody has any, Chris Roy.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to go back to you for that, please. Um, one of the challenges of the night, two thousand and nine, when the district council disappeared and we were landed with a new authority. There were three parts of the Genesee project which were completed. That was, um, a movable bridge at Broadspurts, a line navigation, a slipway, and the reconnection of the canal to Hillbridge face. Uh, the authority agency prevented the reconnection because they view that area as a flood pond, which I tried very hard to understand. Why do you want to store water up? But I understand why, it's to stop it going down. But even if you had real drainage and it was connected to the plumbing system, it would be draining all the time. It was all weird, it could go with all that stuff. But anyway, that, that, that didn't take place. Slipways is, is difficult because, uh, they own a piece of land, but I think they all want to develop it uh, 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 for more, uh, for housing or some other thing. Um, but it is possible to build a slipway above Welsh Road. Um, you know, with a bit of negotiation. Um, and obviously I'm pleased to hear that there are actually going to do a bit of bridges. So I've, I wrote, well, a letter was written to Chancellor LeBroy from the IWA's country branch. Um, urging Cornwall Council to um get the. Get the regeneration project completed, right? Uh, Council of Roy managed the town council to debate it and you wrote a letter to someone in Cornwall, to the chief executive. Urging them to finish the project. So the situation is still the same because the canal is a valuable um asset for the tourist industry. It's valuable with all sorts of green things and nowadays when people really like to have quiet areas. Even once you get above Broad Springs, it's often very quiet, it's a good place to reflect on, stay for your life. Um, and all those things and um. I'm a branch leading member of the IWA West Country Branch, I'm a trustee of the Buchanan Home Society. Both those bodies have the same view, the regeneration project of Buchanan should be completed. Uh, because the reason I said it's really important to the town in all sorts of ways. People like to walk it, people row boats on it, people canoe on it, people walk up, people friends, all, all sorts, all sorts of things. And it's a really, really valuable thing. So, you know, I would urge, uh, and I know that. The West Country Backside WA and the Buchanan Home Society, uh, are glad that. Council of Roy is a Cornwall councillor because uh he has the same views as, as we do. Because it is a valid thing, um, in all sorts of ways as I've previously described, so whatever. Whatever else the town council can do, they need to um. Uh, need to try to persuade Cornwall Council, if they're making an application to reduce the whole thing, which I have had this because it doesn't. They need to make a, they need a logic there to finish the project and the benefits flow to them.
Thank you, Chris, yeah. Kevin, do you want to say something?
Well, only on a point of informationary, the environment agency in wide view, in terms of the ZAR. Do not believe that the canal contributes to the drainage queue. And so the reason why they were hostile to the connection of the canal up to the hill bridge basin. Is because they just will not accept that the canal, even when you go up in the waters, actually drains water away. Um, I find it bizarre, but that's been their position, they've had hydrologists on it in the past. And to the best of my knowledge, that's still their position today.
Well, they haven't ended yet, I mean, we're seeing a lot of rain.
You're going to wonder, you're going to wonder, you're definitely wondering.
You know, because you only have the, like I say, they open the.
Open the paddles, runs away.
You've got the older float behind the council, I mean, it's actually pushing it, that's a problem.
But they, they, the position, the official position of the environment agency, and I don't believe it's changed. Is that the canal does not contribute to the drainage queue.
Okay, thank you, thank you again, Chris.
Okay.
Any, any other, yes, Mr. James?
We're just on about the rate war, but I didn't mention it. I mean, every few councillors have wondered down in that look. You've been down there?
Yeah.
And, and you seen what it's like?
Yeah.
Have you been down there?
Yeah.
You've been down?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, right, well, when the tide comes in now. You've got spurts coming up from the outside of the wall of, the seaward wall of Tommy's pit. If they don't repair that soon, it's gonna go and then a whole lot will come in through. They really need to go down there, drain Tommy's pit out and, and get in there quickly. Eh? Well, it's still bloody running out when the water's, when they're coming back in, so obviously the leak is lower down in the water, isn't it? The inside's got to be fixed before they repair the outside.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Like.
Okay, any others? No? Okay, thank you, very good. Um, so, number ten, to receive an update on the warm space initiative and agree any necessary actions of the spell literature.
Well, I'm legalist, my name is Martin, I've spoken to some councilors, he's actually away at the moment, but still working on this. And he has um been working on a, on a budget um line in, in the sense that there's. See, I missed the last meeting, actually, where you talked about this, and there's a lot of ideas that the council had. And there's a lot of other ideas out there that other people are working on, so this is quite a fluid um situation. And really, my, my advice to Martin was to the council is in terms of, if you, as I understand, you resolved last meeting to do something. Um, today, we was about setting a, a limit around that and setting a, a, well, a budget from reserves is what we often do. Because it's not in, in, in my budget, but setting a figure up is what you need to do today. And you did set up a forum, working group last meeting, so really, it's for that group, I would say. That once the council has said, this is what we're comfortable in allocating to this. The working group can then have that flexibility to react to what else is happening and actually come up with a final programme. Um, in essence, like, or what's been put together, um, there's something about, you know, information leaflet. Or even a booklet to give to people, so there's actual hard copy, um, reference to people to look at rather than just do it all online. Um, so there's costumes around that, um, coming in for, for a thousand pounds. Community trucks was the other element, where potentially actually getting people from home to such warm spaces will be an element. Where are those spaces are, so, and Martin's sort of worked through, um, having spoken to some providers. So how actually it's broken down is between what, a, a one-month trial and for the rest of the November to March period. But that comes in at somewhere around fifty, sixteen and a half thousand pounds if we were to fund regular community transport. Um, just in time for information gathering. And then there's really the, the warm room trial, as, as Martin's called it. Um, now, at the moment, I, and I think that's, there's a lot of an unknown around this. What Martin's currently costing out is the potential for a project coordinator, is kind of the main element of that. With some equipment and consumables and that's coming in around the sixteen thousand pound mark. Um, I don't yet know, I don't think anyone yet knows what's needed in that. I'm not gonna rush and appoint a coordinator because that's standing by me on something, and we don't know who else is in the market and what else is happening.
It might not be needed.
Yeah, and of course, and another element potentially is around the library, in the library role. Now, at the moment, we haven't costed that, but what I would suggest, if you, if you are minded to set aside fifteen, sixteen thousand around the trial or that. Generally, then you'll seek to, you know, apportion that in the best way. I mean, having spoken to um Mark, who's our council manager. I think the library will be limited in just in terms of its seating space and such, do something on any, or any large scale at all. Because it's also a library, it's well, not that, it will be open and there will be people in it, keep you warm, using it as a library. But it's probably not somewhere where you could get lots, where you can get lots of people or, you know, a good chunk of the day. Um, so, say, the library is partly, be part of the solution, but I wouldn't necessarily pin a lot on that. So what um the current figure that add to was just over thirty-six thousand pounds. And really, it's where that, so it's really, it's for councils to make a decision as to what level of resource. Um, we wish to put to this project.
Um, I guess I'd like to sort of add a, a bit of an observation, is obviously this idea is very go national. And there is already a lot of people saying about how you should be using your local library more, you should be going to your library, et cetera. So even if we don't do anything, we're gonna probably end up with a lot more people potentially going to the library just because that's what the national message is. Um, in some ways, that means we should be trying to support that in terms of the opening hours potentially. Um, even if it means that in terms of, you know, putting a kettle on for people, it's not necessarily that type of thing, it's more literally just opening the hour. So it would be good to get that costing. Do you have any concept of how much extra that might be, because obviously that's just to be decided here, but. Like, you know, are we talking about like ten thousand, are we talking about ten thousand a week, like, what is it?
Um, no, must be, at this stage, I haven't costed it, I have a quick, um, really, I'll tell you. One of the last days, I think you need to decide a, a, a figure, if you want to make an extra allowance for something else, that's fine. I think the detail needs to be worked through.
Um, okay.
I mean, I mean, there are, we're talking a bit later, I mean, the heating costs themselves actually are going to start adding up for us as a council. Um, quite significantly, um, that's not so good at doing, but you know, we need to keep that in mind, and I haven't got a way of costing that. In staffing, I mean, obviously there are issues about the times of the day or the number of days, it might be broken three and a half days in fact.
Yeah.
So, um. But a, a, again, I think we need to sort of work through the demand and the actual, the benefits of that. Because, say, you could have some throughput of the library, but you're not somewhere where you can literally sit people for a long time or a lot, certainly not a lot of people. There's not a lot of extra seating space just for people to be there for all day.
Yeah.
But.
Yes, sure.
Um, well, two, I've got two points, I think, one is that the, the trial period, as I understand, it's October. So we haven't got a lot of time between the trial period, to analyse the trial period before we're into November. And we need to be putting something into operation. So for example, with the project coordinator, um, if we have somebody who's working in October who doesn't know if they've got a contract on the first of November. That's quite a, a, a difficult place for that person to be in, so. I suppose my feeling is that we should try to make an allowance for the whole amount. On the basis that we may claw some of it back, you know, for example, if um, if the grant funding that Beetle's talking about maybe comes through or. Uh, some other things. Um, the second thing I wanted to, was I'm surprised that there isn't any um sort of room costs in there. Like for, you know, if, if we weren't having, if, if a warm room, for example, wasn't in the parkhouse central or the library. We might be supporting another organisation, like the church or some, some, you know. But, I mean, they, they may well have those rooms and so on, but I don't know, it feels to me like there's. That maybe for safety's sake, we should put in an element about supporting another organisation with a room.
That's still being discussed, isn't it?
Yeah, so in, in, yeah, yeah, so one thing, you're quite right in that, say, the solution may not be the parkhouse. Because there might be other people doing something similar, I'm not really aware of one local organisation that's considering what it might be able to do. But at the moment, no decision. And I have said to them, keep in mind that the council is minded to be supportive. So there may be a request from them to say, actually, we'd like to do this and. Can you, can you support it, so that may be a route. Um, and we're aware that um there are also form-wide initiatives, volunteer corps, such a good thing. Which we get up a bit nebulous, I'm told literally today that they're, they're looking to set up twenty hubs, but we don't know where. So again, ideally, we want one of them to be here, but there's, as I say, there's an awful lot of unknowns. Um. I'm not sure, so I must say, in terms of, we do have actually some volunteers have come forward from our own initial kind of. Putting out there, but again, they, we need to find a way of how that works, how they, they're bending to an actual system. If volunteer corps will do it, perhaps, you know, they could actually go through that route, be trained by them and all under that banner, and it might be quite. Easy, as it were, in terms of, we'll just kind of signpost them, but again, it may be more complicated. So I'm, I'm not sure, until we know what we're doing, it's not, it's even unclear whether we need a project coordinator.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so really, so my advice to Martin was, uh, you just need to bring to council something. So this is what, this is as far as it's got, you know, thinking at the moment. It's for you collectively to decide how much, as it were, that you want to set aside. And I have actually, I've seen the pay, the, the good old reserves list as to, I mean, there is a project reserve which you can draw down from. Um, so truly just setting that budget limit at the moment, it doesn't all need to be spent, as you say, again, until we know, it could be that. Someone comes in, they get funding through a different stream and actually it's very little to spend, but that's fine, we want it delivered.
It goes to the end, yes, it says, yeah.
So, so through the money and debt work that I've been doing, or have the council, I've obviously been speaking to groups who. Are planning or thinking about warm rooms as well, because often they're, they're quite, um, although people with financial difficulty and possibly. Would be looking um for someone to keep warm, and, and as Keith has said, it's quite fluid and there's at least two or three organisations that may be contemplating doing this. So a, all I would say to hopefully inform your decision-making is that it, it might not be just the council that needs to provide space or is providing space. It might be a week of warm rooms in different locations, that might not be that helpful for people. But if it seems somewhere as well as just you, that might be helpful for people, it might be for your captain, it might be for Stratton. So, um, I don't, that probably doesn't help with decision-making, but I thought it was worth, worth me saying that, that in talking to those groups, there are other people planning this. Um, and they may either want help from the council or just be another place of people go.
Yeah, thank you, Ian. Um, I guess if I was just costing a project, I'd probably just add an extra bird on top of what's been marked out already. Just in terms of allowing for that slack and bit of flexibility. I'm very aware, I think, I think the biggest thing is you're gonna want to pro, if, if we're gonna have to do something ourselves. You're gonna want a project coordinator before October because you need to start, you know, planning for the October prototype, as it were. Um, they're the ones that could be doing a lot of heavy lifting, they're the ones that are doing the communication between people and organising people, so. It's, again, I'm always trying to figure out how to best equip you in terms of the decisions that we can make today. Um, which is also when you'd be putting a drop post live if this was to go ahead, et cetera. Um, so if this was go ahead, when would a drop post go up potentially, if one would go up? Is that what I'm about to say?
Well, I think this is, I mean, so I think today, what I would say is you, um, what enables is setting a budget. And then we have a process behind that, which is actually empowering the, um, the, I think we call it a forum, didn't we? But the minute, but the working group forum, we should, you know, enable that to then work through the detail. So if it's then determined that whatever's needed, whether it be hiring or paying someone else to, another area, or whether it's a, a body that needs to come and do something. Um, we've then got the authority to spend the money to do this setting.
Okay.
Well, yes, that's the process, as I see it, because again, at the moment, there's too many unknowns. Um, if, if we know we need a person, we, we, we'll advertise to the person as soon as we know what we need, but.
Then the person would help us find out what we need, if you didn't know, that's, that's the bit I am icy as, like, as running projects. Um, so yeah, as I said, I think for the number that I see on the forms, I'd literally just add a third, that would be my personal preference, point out there.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, obviously he wasn't here for the last meeting, but, um, but it looks like Martin is the one that's done most of the budget change and looking into this. So I guess we should go by his fingers and as, please take a bit of contingency, because I feel like there might be a few more bits. And that's, that's the maximum, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
So, um, that's kind of where I'm, with very little information, the word that I go about. With a lot of unknowns, that's kind of what we, we trusted him to do it, so I guess that's, that's.
Hey, Dan, that direction.
Kevin?
All I was gonna say is, I was really enthused at the last meeting by, by this whole concept. And I find myself left unsuited today because I find it a little bit wavy through treacle and. Making commitments that we don't even know we're committing to. I, I kind of know what a warm room is, it's got four walls of roof and it's warm and hopefully it's towards the windows. And I kind of know about the booklet that we're looking to create that points people towards the, the service providers. What I'm not particularly comfortable with is the sort of nebulous nature of, of what we're. What we're kind of allocating the budget towards. If, if I had a piece of paper that said, keeping the podcast warm five days a week. For potentially fifty people coming, get warm between the hours of oh nine hundred and fourteen, fifteen or sixteen hundred. Fine, I could, I could kind of relate to that, but, but I. I suppose where I've got myself too, is I am uncomfortable putting my hand up to a budget that is this nebulous. And I understand about all the time scales and I understand the momentum from the last meeting wants to be continued, but. meeting wants to be continued, but unless we've got something a bit more specific, I fully count over it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going Simon, would you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, I kind of, I'd support going with the budget we have here as a, as a allocation from reserves, um, plus a contingency, it seems sensible to me. It's the best plan we have, there's a lot of work we've done on it. We are, I appreciate a lot, it won't, the detail won't emerge until further down the line, but we need to get started if we're gonna find that detail out, so I, I go for it.
Thank you, Simon. Yes, Peter?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Um, I, I have to apologise to some degree because I haven't been to any of the meetings that, where this has been discussed, but I do like the principle and I absolutely support the principle. But looking at this as a presentation, it, I'm a bit defeated because normally when you're running a project, you look at what outputs, what end results you're aiming for. And I just can't see that in this. It's like we've got a massive spend, but we don't really know what we're gonna do with the money. And I know that there is a lot of chicken and egg here, but like Kevin just said, well, isn't it just as simple as keeping one of the rooms in the Parkhouse Centre warm? Can it not be as easy as this? Well, I'm, I'm willing to understand that because I would have thought if we just make sure that we've got a room that we could welcome people in, in working hours, and we don't have to have, because, because what I'm also thinking about is, it's nearly thirty-seven thousand quid. Uh, this is money that people have paid out of their pockets. And, and we need, you know, it, it's up to us to make sure we spend it responsibly. Um, and it just feels to me, I haven't, we haven't identified the outputs, the community transport thing, I'm not confused about, I understand the need for it, but it, it, it doesn't feel like we understand the problem well enough to address it sufficiently with this sum of money. So I'm all for it, but I'm struggling.
Just if I can fill in some of the gaps, at the, at the extraordinary meeting, we had a whole range of community groups in view, churches, the food bank, various other groups standing up saying they, they had facilities, but they wanted the council to play a coordinating role. There's also, so, and part of that is the leaflet that helps people in the community understand what services are offered and how they're coordinating. I mean, coordination was a massive part of it. Um, there's the community transport, enabling to get people from, you know, the outlier regions into those places. So it is more than just supplying a four walls and a litter. Um, and, and yeah, it was really, uh, the enthusiasm around supporting existing fantastic volunteer and community groups here to enable them to do what they, you know, what they can to maximise their kind of effectiveness, I guess.
Yeah.
So it, it, there was a lot more to it, obviously, and that's reflected in the different elements that we see across them.
Good summary, Simon. Yes, Sean?
Yeah, I think I just want to riff off what Simon was saying. So for me, the idea was all about kind of connecting the dots of the community organisations and creating like stronger bonds. So obviously this thirty-seven, like six K would be part facilitating a larger community project, but maybe we're not fully delivering, maybe other community groups are delivering, but it brings us together stronger in that response because unfortunately a crisis, which is what this is, is completely nebulous. So we don't know what's gonna happen next, we don't know the impact, we, there are so many unknowns, but it is an emergency. And I think if there's ever a time to not like water down our aspirations with something, it's this because this could be life-changing, just like we heard Liam talking about kids who hadn't had breakfast and that was life-changing for them. Those things are completely connected and this is gonna run and run. So if we can make a start with this, I think we need to go with that today.
Thank you, Sean. Yes, Katie?
Um, so, uh, round the back of that as well, um, because this is about assigning the budget, it's not necessarily we are spending all of this.
No.
That's, I think that's the, the difference here. Um, it's not, it's basically we need to agree an amount which we're comfortable with, but if it had to go, then, and that's gone and it's spent, then we're comfortable with that.
Yeah.
And it's like, so, you know, you're building that risk into it. Um, and it is nebulous and is frustrating, but that's also because we don't have that person yet to be that coordinator, to spend that time researching all those individual aspects, the exact cost of things. Um, we don't have that ability necessarily within, uh, what we've got at the moment. And we can't necessarily expect, um, like individual councillors to be able to do that either. It, it is a paid position to be able to do that sort of level of work and level of detail. And I'm actually, like, for the amount that's been put in front of us, I'm actually really impressed. There has been a lot of work done from councillors and from, well, specific councillors especially, uh, and from the community and from our own staff. Um, and assigning a budget now is basically showing, yes, we trust that this is going in the right direction, we are happy with this amount to spend if it had to happen. And in the same way that we did for the summer programme where we assigned a budget, but we didn't actually spend it, because we had a partner that came and wore that was able to deliver most of it, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm expecting similar sort of thing to happen here and it's happened really well, really, really well, so that's why I'm happy to, to go with it.
Okay. Last point, Kevin?
Yeah, I don't wanna bore, I'll probably do, but I'm not gonna be able to. Um, I don't wanna disparage anybody and it's a great deal of work. And as I said, I was very optimistic and enthusiastic about the project after the extraordinary meeting. Um, and I think it's something that town councils should be ambitious and aspirational towards. However, and it's a however that I'm not gonna get over, I need to understand in my mind before I allocate the budget, thirty-seven thousand would be part of a, a committee that allocates that budget. I need to kind of know a little bit what it looks like. And if it's essentially, we will leave thirty-seven thousand handy, which will essentially be a series of grants which we hand out to people, then I kind of, I'm relatively comfortable for that. If it's, we're gonna spend thirty-seven thousand quid of taxpayers' cash to heat the Parkhouse Centre, well, why is it that much money? That seems an awful lot of money to heat a room. It, it seems that there's just a little bit too little detail for such a big amount of money. And I know the council's got some reserves, but those reserves are finite. And ultimately, all of the money in those reserves were paid by the council taxpayers' budget.
Sure.
So, you know, to the, to the people here, the people, you know, the two or three that's watching on the TV or whatever, I, I think that we should owe those people a little bit more detail. Even if we're gonna have another extraordinary meeting in a couple of weeks where we can, we can put a, a budget and we can put some actual budget items. And as Pete said, let's have some outcomes, you know, even if the outcomes are we will assist in funding social groups to do this and, and allocate funds accordingly in, in the form of grants. If we were allocating this as grants, then we would ask a lot more of the people coming forward, submitting the grant application. And I think we need to ask more of ourselves as well.
Thank you, David.
Well, if I can abide, I mean, we know we're not in a hiding situation, yet ordinarily or ideally, right, no, this wouldn't be coming in this format, it would come as a project plan and we'd know what was going to be done and who we might be commissioned to do teams and it would be, you know, fully costed on that basis and you can make a decision. And that's where, no, I'd certainly like you to be as well. Um, but given the time this has come through, that's just not been possible. And given, say, the, the fluid nature of what may be on offer in other places, and my advice to council is, no, don't spend money doing something if someone down the road is doing the same thing. You know, we're all a bit foolish and you could actually be throwing money away if you better direct it. Um, I'll, I'll remind you really what, and it's not for me to make a proposal, as it were, but I might give you a, a hint, really, if you, if council so far indeed, it can set a, a budget limit and it can delegate, in fact, in terms of decision-making, it delegates it to me in consultation with the, uh, the forum, and the forum is actually well, uh, staffed, including yourself, councillor. So you will have further say, that further detail does need to be worked up and come back and say it's something that rule the councillors or certainly all the councillors on the forum and to do that, you know, any other councillors can attend such a forum, it's not, they're not so formal in that sense. So there's more work to be done. So this, no, this is not a be all and end all, but I do appreciate it does lack at this stage, it does lack an awful lot of detail, but we do have a way of doing that.
Can I propose then? That we agree to allocate a budget of up to forty thousand pounds, um, delegated to Keith in consultation with the working group for, in line with what needs to be done. Yes, Katie?
Uh, can I make an amendment to that of, it was, uh, a third act, it would be like forty-seven thousand, so it would be like nearer to fifty, but that's, I'm sure to do.
Well, if I say forty and if you all say no, that's fine, that is absolutely fine. I'm, I'm gonna go with proposing forty and then absolutely, I won't be offended if you all say no, actually, because you would like it to be more. Just wanna get one on the table, just so we've got a starting point, basically.
One second.
Second, so all those in favour?
Oh, I didn't mean to, sorry.
No, no, all I was just gonna say is, I do tend to agree that we don't know exactly what's out there yet.
No.
And there is an awful lot out there that is already providing and intending to provide.
Yeah.
Um, as far as I'm aware, the Parkhouse is heated anyway.
Yeah.
Um, how are we going to manage to ensure that, like, just from the transport side of it, people don't abuse it? Oh, I'll phone up, say I'm going into the warm room, so if we get, we get a taxi interviewed.
But. I think with anything, any good work.
Yeah, so I, I'd like to see a bit more, bit more flesh on the skeleton.
Yeah, which will be down to the, the working group to do, that's exactly what they're there for.
And there is a trial, so it's, yeah, a third of us, also to the trials, so as much as we possibly can in the short time scales we have, we'll be able to test those things and look at those things and ask those questions. So bring those questions and ask the working group and we can work that out and, and do the best we can, um, in, in the short time we've got. I think it'd be fantastic today to get it up and running so that the working group can get, get moving on things. But we do have a couple of other opportunities, notwithstanding without extraordinary meetings, to make some decisions and to, to, to trim things down if need be or to react to what's going on in the community. So I don't see this as setting wheels in motion, we can't, we can't halt again, but it is kind of important to get going sharpish, I think.
Yeah. So all those in favour of a forty thousand pound budget being set, so I'd delegate to Keith in consultation with the working group to work it out in final detail? And all those against? I think so. And I'm staying. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay. Um, number eleven, to agree to fund a corporate flu immunisation programme for staff wishing to participate.
Well, hopefully the paper covers it, it's not of huge expense, um, just that, uh, I see some people would avail themselves of this facility, it would reduce, well, have potential producing sickness and, and such, and, and upset tears and because of that. Um, so it's just because large previous or recent years, more people have been eligible through the government scheme, but there's kind of that back.
Hmm.
So, um, so staff agrees with me and I say, well, to yourself.
Yeah, Sean? Um, I think it's brilliant and really good value for money and I suppose we do that right now.
Taken it. All those in favour? Thank you very much. And so to adopt the severity and respect pledge.
Again, I'll just open on this as I kind of pull that forward. This is, um, the, the local government sector is trying, always striving to improve standards. Um, dare I say, there are issues across the sector of, um, poor behaviour. Um, and this is, I'm not saying this to happen everywhere, but this, uh, but in terms of, this is the new standard that's between the various societies that have created. Um, so it's kind of imparting the code of conduct and gives the council the, you know, you can get a stamp on the map, as it were, to say you're one of the councils which has pledged to, to do that.
It was a bit of a hard brain, I mean.
I'll stop speaking if you want.
If there isn't any questions, I'd like to propose that we adopt the severity and respect pledge. Thank you. All those in favour?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thirteen, to provide guidance on the obje, about objectives for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget set in process.
My show, isn't it? Right, I mean, I'd, I'd be clear, this is not about setting the budget or setting the precept because it's too early to do that, but I think it's incumbent on me with my R and R hat on is to start you thinking about that process and to give some, at least direction and thoughts around it. I've put together a paper today really to say, we have a current budget of one point three of million this current financial year. Um, in a nutshell, there are some fairly significant cost pressures coming through, through staffing, various decisions made and the various, um, national agreements coming through and the fact, obviously, we want to be a, uh, real, uh, cost of living, we want a living wage employer, there's a number of things that's there which push staffing costs. Um, and we touched upon it already around energy costs. I mean, our current energy bill's about thirty thousand. Now, we are not part of the cap, we are, you know, a fertilisation of our personal individuals, uh, and I'm reading things of things like four or five fold increases for businesses. And our energy, um, fixed rate things are coming to an end. So we could, you know, see significant increases there. So you've got that kind of background and, you know, general inflation, we know is high and, you know, our products, our supplies that we buy will no doubt be increasing. Now, against that, we look about our income streams. Um, the majority, seventy plus percent of our income comes through the precept, so in terms of the kind of gearing, that's always going to be an element where we look to, um, the council tax support grant, which has been going down and down, will disappear next year, as it were, that's the end of that, but that's fourteen thousand pounds, we've kind of, yeah, we're out of pocket, as it were, from where we were this year. And we do get, um, essentially about a quarter, I think, or maybe a third, a third of our income through what I call trading, um, the castle, you know, a fair chunk of that actually, and the parkhouse and properties that we own and some, we do get some money from Cornwall Council for various services delivered. Um, but again, actually, I'm kind of wary that all those things are, things, you know, perhaps with cutting back, we know there's a recession and cost of living crisis, some of these things are discretionary spend, which, you know, we can't just rely on the fact that these income streams are going to be maintained, let alone that we could increase them. So there's, no, we need to keep in mind all of those pressures. Um, there's one potential positive, but again, still a very much an unknown. Um, we, we know, we know people don't, as we, there was an issue in that, houses are built. Um, a positive of that, other than people being home, is also that it increases the council tax base and therefore there's more sharing of the burden across, uh, across more homes. So the amount that in, you know, the amount that council base increase affects our income. Uh, and as a kind of, uh, last year, a four point nine percent increase got us an extra forty-eight thousand pounds. So if that, if that were repeated, that's the order of increasing our income without doing any use. Um, but I don't get given any prior indication until those figures come out. And whilst I know, and we all know there are completions happening up at, you know, various sites, the actual scale of that is still very difficult to judge. Um, and again, the same, obviously, the, the council tax rate that we set affects the precept and, uh, again, something like a five percent increase in council tax would give an order of fifty or thousand pounds income. So there are things you need to, you know, I suppose keep in mind at this stage. Um, now, we have to, obviously, in one sense, we have to balance the budget. Um, ordinarily, we, in the past, we have done that through matching. Ordinarily, we, in the past, we have done that through matching predicted in-year income with in-year expenditure. I will use that wonderful word of reserves again, though, that is another place you can not have a balanced budget. In that sense, you can balance a budget by the use of reserves. But again, remembering that's a finite resource, uh at some point that will come and bite, you can't keep doing that. Um and there is obviously at that point potentially a bigger disparity, a jump to to get back to balancing the budget. So they're the things, you know, you need to keep in mind. I'm I'm very conscious, last year we did this in kind of a new regime, as it were. And we had some discussions through a working group, and then we got to full council in December to set the precept, and I think some people waited in it. You know, we weren't involved or didn't really have sight of this. So I thought it was important today for full council to at least give, you know, some thoughts of that and say, I don't see we not to try and set, we will do this, because until you actually see through all the figures, you know, I think that's hard. It's not judgment really you should be making yet, but having some feel for the mix or where you want to go, I think is useful.
Yes. Um again, picking up the one thing that you mentioned, and obviously what's on the next agenda, which is Good Growth Fund, that we're talking about our heating costs. Um and I mean, uh I I know the environmental forum that's been working on, like, obviously trying to, you know, make sure we remove heat from gas boilers and things like that. Um two plus two for four, you're like, how do we get, like, obviously the expression of interest is like tomorrow for the Good Growth Fund. So how do we get? Like, how do we, who who's gonna start to submit the, like, an expression of interest, be able to start to move apart, like, a really expensive, I'm guessing, parkhouse at this point for heating? So it can, like, you know, use a heat pumps or something and start to reduce that bill, you know, solar cells or whatever, whatever we need to do to, because that's what I've had to do personally, it's like, I need to spend a certain fortune now, so I don't get hit when my time, like, ticks over um for my bills. So, you know, are we, are we, like, uh oh, do do, because actually the bill's ticking over is before Christmas, or do we actually have a bit of time to?
Um I think that's a good point, you know, and so of course also jumping ahead, I mean, the Good Growth Fund is out there and that potentially has, you know, is, you know, it's a source of income, as it were, not a non-going stream, but it's a, you know, a project type funding that is there. Actually, I am a little bit aware that there's gonna be lots of calls on that. Um and we've already got two other expressions of interest in, we'll talk about them shortly. Um there are other funding streams, so again, you know, there are. And again, we're hopefully in the process of getting a car, energy and carbon officer, um to exactly do that and look. So again, that's like, one sense, potentially any of these external funding, grant funding sources can top up the reserves or or replace, negate the need to use reserves for those things. Um but it won't answer, won't necessarily need to answer. We're not gonna say, that this winter, we're not gonna swap out to air source. Seems maybe we're saving on energy costs in that time scale.
Yes. Um yeah, I wanted to say that the public sector decompensation fund, which apparently has been funded, is going to be open again from September. So hopefully, that's something that we can use specifically for that, the the building decompensation. Um one question I wanted to ask, which is a meeting manager's apologies for this, is the um strength stores um purchase. Are we still, is it, is there something going about that? Because that seems to me quite a big, a big potential piece to spend that I was trying to factor into my thinking, as it were.
Our current understanding is that the partners to trust are pursuing that purchase with the view of facilitating the continued store. And so at the moment, yes, we haven't allowed for that. Now, what we've said is, if that were, situation were to change, you know, please tell us, and then we will, we figure out where where we pick that up. But hopefully, it makes sense that they take it to their portfolio.
One thing I would say about that is, um I I emailed this, but my thinking is that we could avail ourselves of loans for these types of spend rather than going straight and buying, you know, using all of our reserves. So we could, you know, obviously, ameliorate the cost over several years.
There is a group, yes, again, for capital spend and investment type, there is, you know, the public's, you know, there is a group by which we can access money. So again, yeah, the reserves are not sweet at the end all. Um there are different groups depending on exactly what we need to do, especially when there's a financial return or, you know, a saving.
Kevin.
If we're talking about budgets and principles, then I firmly believe that we shouldn't be dipping into our reserves really nearly, and that we should have the intestinal fortitude to set a council tax that's going to cover our budgets without thinking of the reserve as a, as a thing that we can dip into. So my principle would be that we look at what we need and we raise the budget accordingly, rather than see the reserves as a sort of magic money trap.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other thoughts?
So just one question, are we going to have a group? Is is your intention to set up, as we did last year, kind of um?
Just your way of understanding.
I think the problem, well, again, this is say this, I don't, uh I think the problem last time was that was quite a small group. And again, because it's not um published minutes and such, it became just, there was some input, but it wasn't, it wasn't a little wider council. So I think that's where, you know, I think, I was not saying how, but I think, you know, when we came to actually set budgets, um probably councils hadn't had all been, you know, as much input as probably they would have liked, probably they would have liked. Um so I wasn't necessarily thinking of going down a, you know, an individual forum, whether you want the oversight committee to pick that up, because that's more of a formal process.
You did kind of fill this in, when I was thinking about this today, I've got a list of about twenty things that I want to bring up in terms of finances and this it's not appropriate, is it, for me to go, oh, I wanted this and some was, I wanted that and, you know, in this kind of forum. So it feels like, feels like we need a, we need a, and so the forum, we need a gathering space where we could actually chuck our ideas into the hats and sort of talk it through with each other a little bit, you know, perhaps outside of a formal meeting, or a kind of budget workshop or something.
Okay.
I mean, the oversight committee could be, but it's similarly, you know, similarly large agendas with.
Yes, it it does. So we we can have a, such, again, it's, it, on basis, it's not a decision-making process.
Yeah.
In terms of getting ideas stroke questions, um we can work through more budgets, so I'm not yet actually started the formal process, I mean, we're just gonna start with what we've got and then start with that, what we want to do different or the street cost, as it were.
I just, I was just, would it be worth thinking about a timetable now for a few meetings leading up to December? Perhaps calling on extraordinary meetings of the oversight committee or the full council as need be, so that we can have a mix of informal discussions where everyone can chuck ideas in. But at, you know, probably three or four points between now and December, they get much more formal, you know, kind of unscrutiny by the full council, weird minutes and screaming and all that thing. So we ought to be able to pick out some dates now for very focused budget, budget setting process meetings.
Well, I'm just thinking, sorry.
I would actually go with that, I propose all, and actually then that's, the staff will keep to go away and look at of what, it's just basically come back through it. Yeah, that's it, okay. Yes, I I I propose that, yeah, I want to just say that. So I propose that we um have a a mix of informal workshops uh and um a couple of extraordinary meetings of either oversight or full town council um that the staff might go away and place it into the calendar. Uh and then relevant, interesting councillors can go to those, basically. Um and it might be that those are shortened ones, it is, that is just, that is the only thing on that agenda too, and I think it's important to note.
Yes.
Well, yeah, apart from all the usual stuff.
Is that something that could come back to the next oversight committee in the winter?
Yeah, twenty second.
Yes. Do you do you have a proposal for us?
Please.
I'm sorry, I think that's what I tried to say.
I'll second that proposal. All those in favour then?
Mix of informal meetings to one item. Work, yeah, workshops, so and two one item meetings of the oversight or full council meeting to discuss budget items.
So be confirmed date wise, by what fits with the office. Yeah, so that's seconded, so all those in favour? All those against? And I'm staying.
Thank you.
Is that all I can? And number fourteen, to launch the shared prosperity fund group of Cornwall.
Right, now, could say an awful lot here, but I I I won't. Um really, um the the number this is for the council and actually the wider community to be aware of the launch of this, of this funding stream. It's in effect the replacement of EU money, and it's how the government certainly billets, I I don't know. I I don't do the maths as to whether that's a good or a bad thing, but Bob Sten, or the end of that, Cornwall have been given, allocated a hundred and thirty two million over a three-year process on a time scale, against a number of um share prosperity themes. So um it's like many things, I would say, the sort of that comes through hanging down from government and such, we are now one half a year into the three-year programme. Um the government therefore, or the Cornwall now, will be scrambling, as it were, to spend a certain amount of money in the current financial year. And that is in itself difficult, this is where the good, unready projects, you know, are needed. Um but there also are, some, a lot of money is capital, but some of it is revenue, so there are potential things which, you know, are currently not doing. The timescales are, and some of them are ridiculous, um as as Katie mentioned earlier, one of the deadlines is for expressions is tomorrow. Um we have put in, based on the things we know we are already definitely wanting to do, we have put in for Vancouver Play Park and for the Skate Park, putting expressions of interest. We may actually be in a position to combine those in terms of a funding bid, but we're just kind of throwing them in there, so they're on the table. Um most of them actually run over, there's almost like a year's um application for it all. His application process, but the the lot of the deadlines actually are August next year, and they've got midpoints in between. So they'll pick up what they've got very in September, it's actually, yes, this month, they'll pick up the first tranche, things that they've got to try and allocate some money, and then they'll over time another three kind of decision points, they'll pick up bids beyond that. Um but so it's important, also some notes, I mentioned, it's not, this isn't just a local government thing, this is basically, you know, any, almost anyone, where organisations are eligible if they meet the criteria of the various funding streams. So our community groups, the football clubs or what, you know, whatever, the, you know, social organisations could all bid as well. Um it doesn't, it's not a point that they don't have to come through us. If if those, if other bids are, and if local council supports those bids, it usually probably could do them some good. Um it would be good for us to know what those bids are, but it's not in our gift or for us to control that. So I think that's really, at this point, it's, you know, I've given out the initial, you know, presentation, there's a whole website that the Cornwall Council have put together. They are now still busy recruiting staff to actually give the advice on how this process works. Uh who who will probably be there by Christmas. So, no, that's where we're at as kind of ISIS at the moment, so really I put it on today's agenda for awareness.
I just had a horrible thought. Because we've put expressions of interest in the Skate Park and Vancouver, if we don't hear back until next August about whether we actually have got the money or not, are we in a situation where we've put ourselves into stasis for these two projects?
Uh no, I don't see, no, it doesn't work quite like that. So an expression of interest, basically, you get an acknowledgement and you get an application form back. Uh so there are different decision points, so it's.
I'm saying, if if the decision point about the, those two projects came next August, could we spend the money and then claim it back? Or are we in a situation where we then have to wait until the year that we've got money before we start?
Not next August, from what I understand. Like, so the, um with all these things, basically, most often not, yeah, you do have to spend and then you claim it back. But you only do that once they've agreed it, you can't just spend and then apply and then give it back. Um so um specifically, I think with that fund, like, the one that's on, like, the one that, for the Play Park specifically, it's really is just ongoing. Like, from what I understand on that one, and they're after all the projects, they want to know all the projects now. Um and I think that will do all the projects now for all the different brands, because they don't know, they don't know what's out there. And it's almost a way of them to be able to say, okay, and basically see if the minimum application, like, because that's the other thing to point out, it's like, the amount of minimum spending you need to do is quite high on some of these different pots as well, and the max spend is really high on some of these pots. Um so, yeah, for the, you've got the the presentation down, like, in terms of dates, but it, like, loads of these, they need to get the money out, basically, like, as soon as. So we're we're talking about, like, March, we're talking about, like, for some of them, some of them is like, this 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 strand finishes in March, they need to have given, Cornwall Council needs to have given us the money in March, which means we've already had to have, well, you'd make it, built it, spent it, and then March we get it, so we've got some dates there.
Yes, but there's, I mean, they they vary on the different streams, but, you know, for instance, the Town Rural Coastal High Street Development Fund has has three, four review points, second September, second December, third of March next year, and fourth of August next year. So in essence, they're, they, and it will depend on the the level of ask as to whether that's kind of delegated to an officer type or sign off, or whether it goes to the full Economic Prosperity Board of Cornwall Council, as I understand it. So again, they've got different dates. So it it's all been, it's been put together at speed, no doubt, to try and get money out of the door. Um because it is, strangely enough, dare I say, it is difficult to spend money on these big projects at time, we know, we know the amount of need needing to get the planning and delivery. Um so two and a half years left is quite short. Um which, why, again, we're looking to the projects we've already started planning, is really gonna make sense to put those as the ones forward. Um and then be very mindful of this programme, and especially the revenue streams, if there's anything else that we are looking to do, we can always look to see if there is a funding, if it fits funding stream, and whether it's worth making a a bid to support those things as well.
As far as what is written here, it's like you're talking about promoting spenders to local organisations, is that something we're really doing, as a course of duty?
To be honest, we don't have any authority to do that, it's just, I think, by putting it on the agenda, we're making kind of that public, it'd be part of the briefing. I mean, again, we've got, there's only so much we can do, but I know as part of the outcome of this meeting, we'll make sure that.
So some of the key headliners, um yes, CSEs can apply, uh limited companies can apply. Um they explicitly said that match funding isn't much of a thing anymore, so like, the funding, like, they were very hot on match funding, so it's like forty percent, whatever. That's not really anything, it's all about the value for money, though. So obviously, if Cornwall Council only spend ten grand and they get a hundred grand off of stuff, that's gonna be really good for Cornwall Council. So that's a reminder in mind. So that's sort of keep in mind, uh, having partners always helps. Um, and it doesn't even have to be like formal, massively formal entities, because I know that technically sports clubs aren't necessarily like, they're like an informal entity legally, but then, like, i- i- yeah, they're basically like a sports club can apply. They don't have to be like sports club limited or whatever to apply. Um, and the other thing to note is, yeah, as I said, quite a lot of the streams are quite a big part, so, um, as in like, the minimum spend is quite big. And would be quite hard for necessarily an individual community group to do, but I guess this is where the, the volunteer forum, B R O M comes in and all that sort of jazz, where really, like, the community groups need to get together ASAP with this, if they can. And go through, you know, what possibilities, again, with the community walkthrough thing, like the similar thing that we're doing there, if there are groups, so, uh, that can take that advantage to bring people together and have the opportunity to get stuff in, do it. Um, as I say, iterate, get the, the expression of interest, okay, it does ask for like a number, um, but as they said to me, you can literally just put a pound in, or like, just like the minimum, or just a stupid amount in. Like, it's an expression of interest, it's not like your final application, and then, you know, full well, the final applications are going to change. I would say though, that those final applications are quite hefty. Um, for me personally, I wouldn't necessarily, I would want to pay someone to do it, like, it's not one that I would normally go for as a grant, because it's quite substantial amount of work. Um, so I don't really want you to miss out in that respect, and so if there was a way to potentially also say, and here's some local bid writers that could help, or like ways, you know, people that could help you apply. Uh, I know that Cornwall Council are very keen to stress the fact that they are going to offer supporting help to people to apply, but they're not going to write it for you. Um, so if you contact them saying you've got, you know, i- it's not something you normally do, is apply for a grant or anything, or it looks really scary for a sports club, you know, like a treasurer or something. Just get them to email Cornwall Council and they will get that person assigned to you, and you should have, it sounds like you should have a one-to-one person, from my understanding. Um, but, you know, that's, that's what they've said on what they do necessarily within that time, if they have the time of the people, whatever. Um, so, yeah, um, that's my update on that, I hope that all helps.
Yeah, thanks, Casey. Simon?
I was going to suggest that perhaps we grow a bit above and beyond and hold some kind of event where we, I mean, the council has good connections now through the town team of businesses on the, on the whole climate agenda with, with the climate project. Um, with heritage, who, which we know some of these heritage communities need some help, and on community groups with the wall room stuff. So I'm kind of thinking, we could hold an event with a park house, one, I'm not too remote rushing it, one cold, dark, wet night in November, perhaps would be ideal. Get people in from one of those kind of sections of our community, have someone from Cornwall Council or from the Good Growth Fund explain it, so they can guess, people can ask questions. And then get people talking together, so we can, I don't know, who is interested in, who benefits from applying, and try and get some cohesion. And then, even if it doesn't come off in three months or six months, we've got then the sort of, um, nucleus of a, of a group that can kind of take forward a more united front.
Can we formally resolve to do that, to create this evening of, uh, drawing laughter and free coffee wherever he's going to be tapping into this pot, mate?
I would say as long as Cornwall Council can, we need them.
But can we formally resolve to ask then?
Yeah, we can facilitate that, yes, and we, we can look at the timetable to see if there is a, a particular date that makes a lot of sense, but I'm thinking more kind of building stuff over a few months rather than, you know, emergency reactions to this new event.
Yeah, very good. Can we second what you said? Okay, so those all.
opposed to, um, organise a community sort of information sharing event, inviting, you know, our connections within the various work strands, so from business, heritage, community. Um, yeah, to, to kind of inform and, and cohere around a set of ideas, leave to a proposal perhaps, or a bid.
Okay.
Or maybe just leave it out.
Yes, because I'm, yeah, I'm.
We're going to be detestable, Cornwall Council's involvement, aren't we?
Yeah, to be honest, this is something we can't, no, this is going to be second hand, I don't know, we're not going to allow it after, but they've got people.
So do we start with a, a proposal to get in touch and try and find out?
Happy with where we're going, other than the last bit, so it's not for us to kind of coordinate a bid, in order to really to facilitate the community making bids. Identifying where they fit to work streams and making bids as appropriate.
Yes. Uh, so, there are businesses out there that basically take the cut for writing a bid. And they will go around and talk about various opportunities, and then obviously pitch their services. So if Cornwall Council say, turn around, and they're not going to send anyone, and for some reason, all the connections that we might have as councillors, none of those turn up, then there could be an opportunity there, like even a bid. It's obviously like picking one business over and over or whatever, I don't know how you'd do it, but you could potentially get a, a business to come in and actually talk about it. There's a little opportunity, but, so I don't know how you would want to potentially, I, I don't know how to, I mean, that's a bridge that can cross. Yeah.
Yeah. Seconded, okay, so all those in progress, please. Information now, okay? Information. So, no, it's nice. Um, fifteen, to approve the updated care and conservation policy.
I hope this is, uh, this is housekeeping as to updating good practice, and obviously also a requirement to ensure we keep our museum accreditation.
I suppose we do that. Yes, it's, yeah, completely integral to.
I, I just want to say that, so stating the obvious, the council is at, at massive risk of flooding, because where it is, you know, and climate change stuff.
It's less than a pocket in this building.
That's the case, yeah.
Yeah, it's flooding too.
Yeah, it feels to me like, it feels to me like, in terms of care and conservation, there should be something in the thinking of the council staff about how, how we're going to, you know. How we're going to make the building more, you know, climate friendly, how we're going to get it towards net zero, how we're going to ensure that the stuff is safe and that kind of thing. So, I don't know, I don't know whether it's part of this.
I was going to say, I was just reading down through the, the.
But I mean, the, the purpose, it says the purpose of the care and conservation policy is to preserve the collections of buildings. So, I don't know.
But it's out of the, that's of the art plans, not the, yes.
Uh, so I was just reading it, it says the Heritage Centre has a buildings plan for the upkeep of all buildings, which are its responsibility. So presumably that's the detail you, what.
Perhaps, perhaps, perhaps my comment is just that I'm hoping that in that buildings plan, there's, there's, there's aspects of it. Otherwise.
Yes. Our second chance.
I was just in. Oh, it's interesting, the very final line, which says the Heritage Centre does not contain any working historic items. I'm sure it does.
Working.
Well, it's just a nuance, isn't it? I, I, I just, I mean, it, it amused me, but if that's, if that's the wording that the council manager feels appropriate, I'm happy to support it. Do, does this include, you might not, the accession of this policy, or is that something entirely separate?
Policy is separate.
Right.
Um, and obviously, um, they link together, you know, on, once, once brought into the collection, it's then subject to the proper management of catalogue even looking after, but this requires.
Yeah, okay.
I'm pretty supportive of the changes that they have been forward, basically. I've got a face loss, give it. Um, yes, so did we, did you, I get struck out, you posed and seconded some of those in favour of the amendments shown. Thank you, everybody. Um, to consider assisting with the repair of the Battle of Stafford Hill monument. Got a little bit on issue as well, didn't you?
Yeah, I gave you a little paper as far as where we're at, and really this case is testing the will of the council in what is a slightly unusual set of circumstances. In the survey, this is a important heritage asset of Stratton. Um, I'll do the Stratton, um, but it is actually private ownership. So, um, we haven't had a, this is a full request here, but there's certainly been a ongoing discussion from the, uh, property owners to, if the council and other grant giving bodies would be willing to give something towards its, uh, maintenance. Given that it's, from what I'm being told, it's getting increasingly, yeah, impaired estate.
I was up there recently for the Battle of Stafford Hill, um, you not being able to, which is, the service, the memorial service that they have. Um, so I had a look there with a gentleman from the Old Cornwall Society, he had a, he showed me. Um, it's had a tree, a trunk growing through one side of it for some considerable amount of time, it's shifted it all, and it's made it quite unstable. Um, and he was very keen for something to happen before it was too late, basically, was his feeling on it. Um, I think, you know, investing in, um, something of historical value in Stratton is absolutely something that I would love to see us do. Um, so it just depends what everybody else thinks, like Keith said, it's a bit unusual because it's on private land, but for me, that doesn't change the fact that it's still an historical, important piece of Stratton's history, you know. Yes, Casey?
Um, so I believe, actually, the current owner has brought it thirty October twenty twenty, so they knew the current state of it.
Yeah.
Um, and knew what they were taking on, and would have been talking with slitters about that, and they're not talking about a tiny amount of money for their house even, to be honest. Especially when you look compared to our reserves. Um, and I, I mean, basically, from my perspective, I'd be like quite happy to take it on as a town council, that piece of land from them. If that's, if they're worried about ongoing, you know, if they're talking about the cultural importance of it, how important it is to build, then I feel like a great record with them, to gift that tiny bit of land to build. And we could then see about, you know, well, then it's for us to, you know, manage that and try and work for it. But, I mean, they've brought it so recently, that house, like, they knew what they were taking on, it feels, uh, for the amount of money, I'm just like, what? Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, we've spoken a lot tonight, I apologise, but I'm going to reiterate what I said previously in a different context. I'm not for buying pig in the boat, if, if they came to us with a formal proposal, with some costings, and exact, and, and like you said, possibly, even if they said, you know, we will go joint ownership, or we will gift this to you. On the, on the proviso that, that you do X number repairs to it, you know, if we've got something in front of us that we can actually kick about, and, and it's got some numbers attached as well, then I'm prepared to, to take a view. But I, I just can't take a view on such a nebulous thing.
Yeah, I think there's key functions in there as well, the quotation was, which is quite, did you have to?
I think it was a couple of years old.
It's a couple of years old, which as we all know, the price of materials and everything, that, that quote could look very different now. So I think, you know, as a, as a starting point, it would be good to have a conversation with the landowner and get her re-quote done. But, you know, it's just really to find out everybody's thoughts on that, so, yes, Peter.
It sort of feels like it has some similarity to some of the work that I've seen down at Cornwall Council with regards to permitted paths that are on landowners' private land. Um, and when, you know, perhaps Cornwall Council has spent a few thousand quid on putting stalls and gateways and stuff, it's then asked in return for a twenty-year-old permissive right to access that property. Uh, and I think if the owners were willing to engage with some conversation on that level, it would have, it would feel a bit more tasty to me. But as it's presented at the moment, I think it, it needs to be more.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments before I move this show?
Yeah, I kind of share a lot of those thoughts, it, it seems like a little, like, I'm very passionate about conserving historic assets, but when it's in private ownership, then that gets a little bit complicated and the unknown quote. And it's just, it, it just seems a bit too, something is sitting uneasy, it's not a public thing, it's a private thing, so that's kind of going, yeah, okay, maybe give seven grand to fix this thing that's raising the value of your house and, you know. Well, because a monument in disrepair is, has a different value to a historic monument that's just been recoined with lime water, so, yeah, I don't know, it's just a, it doesn't sit right with me personally, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Simon?
I was looking at the official listing for the Battle of Stafford Hill on Battlestar the other day, because we, uh, as we know, or even frequent visitors to the Royal Cornwall know we're taking an interest in management, and from the nature point of view, then. Um, I'm sure it said something about there would benefit from improved kind of battlefield trail. Um, so if we are looking at supporting or jointly perhaps bidding for someone for money for the monument, maybe it would be a good time to kind of have a look at what, what we could do there in terms of improving the interpretation of people who visit that site. Hopefully increasingly, because I, I notice it was a stunning asset, um, and kind of, you know, increase their understanding of what happened there in terms of battle experience.
Absolutely, yeah, I think it's a really, really good point. Ian?
Um, if it's helpful, my understanding is the National Lottery Heritage Fund is now able to fund monuments and other such heritage assets in private ownership, provided there is a, um, a limited, a minimum number of days of public access to that. So I don't know if the, the owners are aware of that, but it might be worth, and it is listed, I understand, so there is a level of responsibility on the end of that, that I'm sort of thinking of.
Okay, that's really, yeah, that's helpful in that.
Yeah, I mean, my advice is that there is, I think, if, if there were public funds to be going there, I think you would want to make better use of it, or better access and make that more aware. I mean, I must, I, actually, I'm trying to get up there, I've been up there a little past a bit of a while ago, and I don't remember actually finding the way to the monuments. I was on our side and I saw the people from our information and such, but, um, at that time, I don't remember.
Exactly.
If there were public funds going there, we would have to make sure that it was.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, there is access through a gate.
Yes.
And it's, it's quite obvious, it says, Bevall House, private property, no public right of way, access permitted to civil war memorial only. So you can go through the gates up to the war memorial as it stands.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Happy you're here?
No, that's mine, I think we'll just take that away.
Yeah, I feel like, you know, is it appropriate for me to have an association with yours, which that have to be, because that's a new, after, you know, what's the process as far as talking to, uh, I don't know, as a council?
Well, I think really, if the council is minded that you're not going to entertain giving any of our money to a private.
Without a proper.
Well, no, if you're minded that that's where you are, then probably resolve that and.
Okay.
You know, that kind of e- ends it, as it were, because that would have been the conversation, so the point here was not necessarily to come up and say, yes, we can do it, it's been pounds.
No.
Because we're not quite in that situation, it's whether, you either say, we want to have a conversation, bring us back a proposal, and we'll consider it. Or you can say, given that, given it's a credit, I don't know, it's their problem and, we, we don't take it further, don't put Western.
Yeah, I see.
People's time, so really, uh, ask you to go one way or the other.
I think it sounds like we were like in the first world, where we are, you know, we want something to be. I think it sounds like we were right in the first world, where we are, you know, we want some to learn more about it.
Happy.
Yes, and you know, write it off completely, but so if I propose that we.
We have further conversations.
Try and ascertain exactly what, you know, what they envisage of their view of what that is.
So just the point is in the law.
Yeah, to facilitate a conversation. Yeah, okay.
Just because I've been quite different from where I am. The the wording on the list of the public access cross type field path is possible, but there is step from improvement into a coherent battlefield trail.
Yes, yes.
So whatever that means.
Those effects on the conversation. So, to consider the budget allocation for the empty entire park project.
I'm gonna go forward with this. Um so, um basically, uh our services manager has gone away and engaged with a few different play part manufacturers uh with the current budget of a hundred K. And that was based on, obviously, our prior experience with the previous park that's been refurbished. Um where obviously that was done before or during Covid and therefore the prices have changed significantly. Um other things to note about the um the the new park as well, as in the park that was built, was the materials used as well, like softwoods, not necessarily ones that you choose to put in now with the given environment. Um and I believe there was also a real sort of push from our side with our experiences of various parts of the park having to be redone, broke again, broken again, like ensuring that hopefully we get a team to come on rather than someone that sources lots of different companies' parts and puts them together in different ways. So like a play part uh design team or manufacturer. Um so, uh the, we had obviously a few ideas that came through that got emailed around everybody and uh what I took away from that was you could basically just get new pieces of equipment and that's it. And I was looking from the point of view of, well, why if you go from the other point of view of what's possible? Like what is possible? Like go onto these manufacturing websites and see what sort of combinations we have. With my view being as a designer of play, ensuring that we get equal or more than the current play that we currently got. We're not producing down the amount of play. Um so our current play part, Cater's Place, was built in nineteen ninety three. So it has had substantial. It's had, obviously over the years, I was talking to people there that grew up and have had kids playing in that play part and their play, their kids in that play part. We are talking about a full generation of kids in this town have grew up, met friends, um and developed themselves in this play part. So going forward, um we, I basically talked to the play part manufacturers, it feels like that we should be going from the perspective of actually going out to a tender for this. Maybe because obviously the cost involved, um but also from the, we're looking at the budget from the view from obviously with the fact that the prices have gone up and for comparisancy. So when you're talking about equipment, the total budget, you tend to for for just the floor, used to be the equipment cost at forty percent. So forty percent of the equipment cost, that's your floor cost, is now sixty to seventy percent. So we're going to be spending basically a hundred K on a floor with no equipment for the area that we're looking at. So, I mean, obviously, this is why, you know, I'm looking at the good growth funds. It's like, well, there's opportunities there, there's economic benefit for the town, because it's obviously a place that visitors drive past. It could be driving people from the beach through the town, especially next to tourist information parks, it's not just people going to the beach all the time. It's spreading visitors around, there's less of an impression in other areas. Um there's an economic benefit for the parents too. Um for they are, obviously, there's quite a few parents who can't afford childcare, and so taking their kids to a free outdoor park is the way that their child can learn to socialise and copy other kids and learn off other kids. That is their only option. Um and also from another perspective of, as I say, in terms of visitors, it it could be a potential attraction too, because for myself, as someone that does use that park, I end up travelling, as in driving away from the town to explore other parks. Um and so obviously, you know, we're talking about keeping people within the town, that's something we want to try and do rather than then like go to the Holbury or Bifford or whatever, just so they can go to a different, slightly more substantial play part. Um now, I guess for a, if you saw the designs that I sent around, they were literally like, what if we have no budget? And so the, in fact, the costs that came back for those, if we go through those. Which tab is it? Um the the viewed harbour design was two hundred and eleven thousand pounds. Uh the environmental eco design, Eco Village, was a hundred and ninety eight thousand pounds. These are all excluding that, I don't know what we do with that, by the way. Um and so the other thing though that was highlighted to me was the ability to create bespoke things. So, uh there was a lovely example that manufacturers used where there was like a lighthouse that was very unique to a local town. And they actually created their climbing frame from the design of that same lighthouse. Um and I think, you know, it, there is a potential cultural opportunity here to really sort of capture the sort of feeling of the town and portray that in the play that we offer to the kids. And and there's also the educational side as well. Um so part of the reason why I was staying away from pirate ships everywhere is because I feel like if you go to marine, like learning more about the nature side, learning more about looking after the environment side. Um that actually sparked some ideas with councillor Dory, but he was like, oh, we could do something with the two minute beach playing, actually, two minute beach playing with the park. Um talk about, like talk to local, like comic book people or people that are actually creating local stories about looking after the environment, putting some of those pictures that they've made onto the fence or whatever, um or just into the design of the actual equipment. So there is so much flexibility of options there, but unfortunately, what it comes down to is no play part manufacturer is going to go away for us, like especially if we're towards multiple on, design a custom thing, come back and say, this is what you can have without us going through a tender process. And to go through a tender process, I've been advised that we could do with a budget. Now, the budget that we do assign to this doesn't have to be necessarily, again, a bit like what we were trying to sort of talk through earlier, doesn't have to be the spend that we'll end up spending, it just has to be the spend that if for some reason we don't get any other income from the silver funding or through the the growth prospect fund or whatever, that we'll be happy to spend or acquired, no, to spend. Um so I would want to see potentially, I mean, I would say a minimum of two hundred, to be honest, just so that we could cover our bases. And actually, what I put expression of interest for was like four hundred and fifty to the growth fund to start looking at all the sports equipment on the side that we could be doing, because we talked about having like fitness things around. We talked about having like a marine grade cover, like for shelter from the sun, things like that, to allow people uh to have like a picnic area and outside communal space that we could be, you know, always like an informal bandstand for young kids and adults, basically, that sort of thing. Um but from our perspective, I want to be seeing basically us pointing out to a tender of at least two hundred and starting that process going, basically. And I feel like we've had, like, there's enough bits here that we've sort of done our research, like I know there's some very specific things that our facilities manager would want to see, like specifically about maintenance, warranties, flooring and things like that, that I think we're at the point where we feel comfortable, the fact that we've got enough information to be able to build a tender document, basically. Um and I don't know if that means actually the first stage is we build the tender document and then we come back to council with the, this is what the tenders go look like, or can we basically go, this is the point I hand over to Keith to talk through possible processes.
Well, it was like, I wasn't going to, um, too far down the processes today, as you, as you say, that the council would need, from a tender point of view, you need to decide the theme and the, you know, the outputs, as it were, and then that's where you're going to set the tender resolve to design against. But so the important thing was today was, what's that limit that you want to give them to bid against? I think historically, we find that's what they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, very, when we do this in the past, actually, you don't really, you don't say, design us something and give us a price. You tend to say, this is how much we've got to spend, design us something.
Yes.
You then do have the option of saying, well, actually, we don't like that bit or can that be reduced and change it somewhat, or do we want something slightly different and and it changes if you've got the funds to do it. So you can do it at that process. But at the moment, the start point is that you, you know, given that you have resolved to do the park, um the the limit we set within that, um on the financial side.
The the other thing I might add as well is, um, the designs that I did come up with are entirely concepts. I am more than happy to throw them away, like, you know, that the whole point was to show the possibilities. Um and the basically what's out there, because I felt like that wasn't necessarily what we were seeing. We weren't seeing the possibilities because we gave them a figure.
So we are sort of categorically saying that the hundred thousand that we originally were talking about is just.
It's going to get you three pieces. It it is, to be honest, because as I said, like the prices of the flooring alone has doubled at least. We're not including having to do any colors in the flooring or anything like that. Um and we did talk through options like chip, chip, woodchits and things like that. Um but, um, yeah, it just, it it doesn't matter, it's literally like, you know, we're talking about like the concrete in the underneath, like foundations and things like that. Uh but I mean, this is the point where we set a budget of how much we are willing to spend. And again, if we come under and we say like, you know what, actually, we're going to cut this back a bit and we can make it smaller by taking out a few bits here and there, then that's what a designer would do for you if they know that they're going to be the designer and the people making it.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I kind of, you solved that pretty well, I feel like, that's great. Um and I really love the idea of an undercover area, I spend a lot of time with children trying to find somewhere. Sassy's birthday on Saturday, I don't know where we're going. Um so that is amazing. Um I think that, yeah, if you bring that budget down, we're not going to know what's out there. And we're not going to know what the possibilities are, and we won't have all the information to make that decision because they're going to scale it to a lower budget.
Yeah.
However, if we know what the possibilities are, as you said, we can get rid of stuff and then come to a full council and make that decision then. So I think that's, it just gives us all the information, which can then we change later, and I'd like to make decisions based on all the information.
Good. The the point I was going to make is, does this meeting tonight have to double the budget? Because for me, you can ask, I I can ask a load of builders to give me a tender for building a multi storey car park in the back garden. It's never going to happen. I don't have the money, I wouldn't get blamed for this, but I could ask people to to tender and submit ideas. So is it not possible to ask as a part of the tender process, what could you in theory do for two hundred thousand pounds? And if we don't get grants from wherever, Cornwall Council, wherever, if we end up having to find that money as future town council, I think that the least we should do is to have some kind of consultation with the public.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're, you know, I'm co-opted, I didn't get elected by anybody apart from the people sitting on this table, but the people who viewed, signed up, you guys, believing that they were going to be more actively involved in these sort of big decisions. And if today, we just wade through a doubling of a very, already very substantial budget without any kind of not consultation, I mean, I'm not, again, I'm I'm aware that I'm in a little corner and, you know, being nasty, but I'm not comfortable with that.
No, I think, I think that's a really nice point, to be fair. And if it's possible to do the tender process by saying two hundred thousand without having, is that, is that possible? Like, does that, how, how, where do we stand? If we have officially said we wouldn't be willing to spend that. Can you still?
Might be short practice, but lots of people are short period practice, aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, um, yeah, as you say, it's you, but I suppose it is, it's a slightly moral thing here, as to your kind of your intention. Obviously, if if you if you tend to something you had no intention of ever letting, that's not fair, is it, on any.
No.
Um, I think if you're setting a figure.
Yes.
It doesn't necessarily commit you to spending it.
Yes, yes.
Quite right.
And we might, and we might achieve plenty of funding from other sources so that the issues may not arise.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Uh, and as well, like I have in in already talked to.